I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners, and I'll ask you to join me in a second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here's first order of business is oral communications. If there's anybody here who'd like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is their opportunity. Will you speak? Your name?
Yeah, I'm Steel, Tenafy Woods Hill. I would just like to ask if it's possible that the committee could spend the next school year trying to make sure that more third graders are proficient in reading. I know the schools do it, but if you could in some way help, like you did the robotics and all those things. I think if they are not reading at the third grade level when they leave third grade, they have a hard time accessing a higher curriculum of upper grades. So if you could really think about if you could or would, or I think it's important, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Just so you know, our ability to affect the curriculum is concentrated in our budget process. And it would be looking for recommendations from the administration, things that they feel that might support better instructional delivery. And we would...
I'm not criticizing them.
No, no, I'm just saying, no, I'm getting to a point. And the point is, we never get what we ask for. And it's important for people to come out when we put forth our budget to the city that people come out and support it. Because we asked for things this year, we had things in our budget that we passed that the city did not support. And a lot of that is because it's just us standing there saying we need it. If citizens come out and say this is a good idea too, it does help.
And when is that meeting?
Well, it's the, we have our public hearing sometime in April on our budget, but the city has their budget public hearing usually in May, end of May.
Would that be a line item, or how would I get, how would I ask?
Well, it'll be the school budget. It'll all be publicized. I mean, now that you're a regular coming to the meetings, you don't, you'll be here, you'll be here for it all.
It's a job getting here tonight, I'll tell you that.
Can I add something through you? We are going over the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment Test Results tonight, which will include the elementary schools. So I think you'll find it interesting that many of our elementary schools are doing really well. So I think we'll all have a very transparent look at where the areas of need are.
Anything else? Okay. We'll move on to recognitions. Do we have any recognitions this week? Okay, we are going to move on to the Student Advisory Council report. We have, you have help tonight, obviously. I understand that the reason we have help is because you want, and it is your right to deliberate on subjects before the school committee. So I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you're here because of that. There is a problem, and I don't believe that the issue that you're concerned with, that the school store is actually on the agenda that got posted at City Hall. It's not online, it's not there. So, doesn't mean you can't talk about it, okay? But we can't vote on it until our next meeting, at which time you're welcome to come back and we can, okay?
Can I give the Gloucesters report anyway and have them weigh in at that time and we don't take any action? I just know how, it's a lot of time commitment to have...
Well, the, I think the point here is that your issue is the school store, correct?
We were just coming today because we had, I was coming to give the full...
The regular report.
The regular report.
We're just still waiting for that.
And we just came because we had our wellness committee meeting, because we are now, the three of us are all wellness committee members, and we had a meeting with Martha Jo and everyone. So we're just here to, you know, weigh in like that, like Kathy said.
You can just report on that if you want, right?
Yeah.
In there, in there, we're going to report.
Okay, and you can, okay. So why don't you start with your regular information, which we're...
Yeah, so today we took our senior class photo all the field, made a big two zero for our yearbook. We also did elementary school photos, which is a new thing. We had over the bridge for other kids, who didn't end up going to a Gloucester Public Elementary School. And then following that yearbook trend, on October 17th, we're going to do all our groups and organizations, which is a big morning because there's a ton of groups and organizations and new groups at the high school this year. October 25th is, that whole week is our homecoming week at Gloucester High School, and the 25th especially is that Friday night football game, which will be the homecoming football game. And we'd like to invite the school committee to come out and join everyone for the crowning ceremony at halftime for King and Queen. Senior Student Council is also selling VIP tickets for a booth on the field where you'll have like an easy up tent so you can stay dry, we'll have blankets so you can keep warm because we, I mean, we all know how cold it gets. And there'll be couches and things like that out on the field, so it's a lot more comfortable than the stands. We are also selling think pink t-shirts at Gloucester High School. We're taking the photo on November 1st because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so we're raising money for breast cancer awareness. We're also raising money for Open Door baskets. They're $30 a basket, I mean, even you guys could buy one yourself, Open Door does it. We, Gloucester High School, has already done 11 so far, so I challenge you guys to buy one, maybe top that, I don't know. We did really well, each group, like, Lo and I just recently made the International Club, and we bought, what'd you say, three baskets? Also, the juniors and seniors of student council are going to be going to, are invited back to the student council conference in North Andover this year, so we're going to be attending that on October 30th. Oh, the Dock Siders, they're having their annual Fall Coffee House on October 24th at 7:00 in the Gloucester High School cafeteria. They are also going on a UMass field trip, they go to a big concert there and observe that, I believe every year. So they're going to that next week, or next Friday, I believe they're attending that field trip. That's my general report.
Okay, any questions?
Is there reform or something for the Open Door baskets?
There is, I believe you can get off the Open Door website.
And I just credit you guys with...
If you want to. I mean, I, I think you should have definitely put it in your name. We have tons coming from Gloucester High School, but the school committee would be great if you guys donate a basket.
You should have, you should have a little notation there.
Right, who told you, do it?
Yeah, you should have, in the name of, you know.
What organization is that?
Open Door.
No, no, you guys, so is it...
Oh, we're the exec, we're, I'm execu-ful, but...
So we should say Gloucester, the Student Council.
Student Council, yeah, just Student Council.
Any questions? Okay, so without objection, we're going to take things a little bit out of order, and we're going to get a committee report from the Wellness Committee.
Okay, so the Wellness Committee met on Thursday last week. Martha Jo, our food service, City Joan, our head nurse, Rosa Francis at the high school, Rian Manneri, right? And people from Backyard Growers and the Gloucester Health Project, I believe, is the organization. And there were only two items that were language changes. One is, and we don't mean to vote on this tonight, but one is something Martha Jo added about, it's on page five, it's "The District Child Nutrition Program Will Compete Students' Special Dietary Needs," and the addition is, "If your child has medically documented dietary needs, please contact the nurse leader," period. So that's just a pretty simple addition. And the all unions, they voted for that. And then the other change was the discussion about the Gloucester High School's school store. And under fundraising on page six, we replaced the first sentence with, "The Gloucester High School's school store will be allowed to operate five days a week for the last 15 minutes of each lunch period." And that was union, so voted as well by the committee.
And I think we're going to have to have this report all over again next month too, because this is, this is not even on, this report isn't on there, let alone a poll. So we're going to have to do this all over again, right from the start.
I thought we'd have the kids weigh in, unless you help us with that.
Well, they're here, as, they can talk about the school store as part of their report. I don't see why they can't.
Right, it's been going really great this year, so we had the wait, I believe it's like October 20, there's a certain day for that. And it's been going really great. I believe, it reminds me of my freshman year, because my freshman year, it was such a big thing for me that I met the seniors, I realized who was on student council, and I started saying like, "Oh my gosh, that seems like so much fun." And so I started seeing those kids, I got, for a while actually, I was using the school store to give kids student council applications for the freshmen, so I got a bunch of freshmen to student council that way. And we're going to use it this month to sell, we just got our senior t-shirts in, so we're going to use it to sell our senior t-shirts, but also the underclassmen and the junior, senior, junior t-shirts as well. We're also selling our semi tickets at the moment through there, so we're using it for other things besides the general snack purpose that it was originally being used for.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much, and as always, you're welcome, Stan, we understand.
It'll work.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like approved for discussion?
My move that we approve consent agenda as presented, second?
I want to say a, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, it's hands. So our next item is on deliberations on educational issues, and on the last Thursday, the building committee, the school building committee met and made some recommendation, a recommendation on the location and also about the process of acquiring the land or transferring the land from the city to the schools. And we are going to be required to confirm that, those votes. So we, Michelle Arigis is here, as well as Tom Ellis, and they will be here to do a present, a small presentation, as well as answering any questions that we wanted.
Maybe she'll do the presentation. She's about 20, I think, 20 to 20.
That might be between four...
So, so now we just want to take you through the considerations that led to the preferred option that we are requesting to submit to the MSBA as part of our preferred schematic report. And then we'll ask for your acceptance at the end of that. So this was, the process that we took was, if you remember back at the PDP, we had 14 options, we went the PDP with nine. Our goal through the PSR process was to get from nine to one, and we did that in a few steps. We went from nine to three to two to one. And so the last time we met, I think we showed you the remaining options, and that was the two options that we had. One was on the Veterans site, that was option F2, a school for 440 students, it's on the fall field of the Veterans Memorial School site. And the other option was called G1, and that is the Green Street Playground Schoolhouse Road site. So the, those were the two options. We still call it Gloucester because we're required to carry that name all the way through the PDP and the accesses from Gloucester, but we have changed it to include Green Street Playground Site. The thing to note here is that both schools are exactly the same. The buildings themselves are exactly the same, the buildings were developed based on the district's educational program. So this came directly from a meeting with Dr. Saffar, the principals, the head of special education, and other people through the working group. We developed this program based on the programs that exist here in Gloucester. The school is proposed to be a three-story school with a cafeteria and performance space on the first floor. Administration at the corner of the building overlooking the entrances on both sites. There are four classrooms per grade. Special education, which are spaces that are in pink, are embedded within classroom grade groupings, so that students do not have to leave their immediate classroom or travel very far to go to any kind of special education program. So this is part of the leading the child in their own classroom and bringing their needs, bringing the needs, the education process to the student rather than taking them out of their classroom and from their peer group. The library is set up so that it's adjacent to the art room, so that you can begin to incorporate STEAM type of educational programs, you're incorporating hands-on learning in art and studies and research. And we also have spaces called extended learning, which are one per two grades. These are spaces within the academic space where larger groups can exit their classroom, go to a study, gathers an entire grade, and have performances, small performances or readings, or do project-based learning, where the project can stay set up, they don't have to take it down because their classroom is being used for other resources, and where it's always on display. So that is three spaces, one on each floor, and one for every two grade groups. I think, well, I won't read everything to you, but the building itself is based on the educational program, and the space on it will be just five 90,000 square feet. And that's gross. So the first site we're going to take a look at is the Veterans Memorial School site. This place is the building in the back portion of the site, and we're doing this mostly because there is one entrance from Webster Road, and by doing that, we can create enough parking on the space, we can push the building back and get all the site regulation that we need, we can lay the building out in the proper orientation to gain a solar orient, I'm sorry, there we go, sorry about that, thank you, this is the updated plan. We can get the best solar orientation for the classrooms, and we can have, provide emergency access around the entire building. This site here provides about 112 plus or minus parking spaces. All of that is in flux until we move forward and actually lay out the spaces with the, with the site and start moving forward. So we'll have more information as we move forward into schematic design. This provides onsite bus drop-off, onsite parent drop-off, meets the educational program, provides all the exterior spaces required for students, including the physical education outdoor spaces and learning areas. The G1 option was the school on Green Street Playground Site, and there were two options originally for this site. One took up more of the forested area, and this particular one takes up more of the field area, but leaves a lot of the forested areas intact. This one provides about 130 parking spaces onsite. What it requires is an easement from Gloucester Crossing, which we'll be coming off of extending Schoolhouse Road and getting an easement from Gloucester Crossing, and then extending all of the public utilities down that road into the site, because there are none on that site currently. The cost estimates that you're going to see for this particular site includes the demolition of both the East Gloucester site, East Gloucester School, and Veterans Memorial School. The option that I just showed you included the demolition of East Gloucester School building. Again, provides plenty of space for outdoor learning, plenty of garden space for all of the student programs. So as we moved forward with the school building committee, we weighed both of these two options together and really looked very closely at one, at what they provided to the students and to the community. And a lot of that came down to where a school could be located, where's the best location for the school, not just today, not just solving this immediate problem, but for long term. And as you all hear, it was determined that the F2 option was the direction to Veterans, so the Veterans Memorial School site was the preferred option. But just to be clear, we'll show you all the cost estimates, which did weigh into everything as well. The cost estimates for the Veterans Memorial School site is higher than the Green Street site, and actually I'm going to show you the cost comparison because it's easier to read. So on your left-hand side is the G1 option, in the middle is the F2 option, which is the Veterans, and then the variance between the two. The difference between the two is about $4,231,000, thank you. And that cost difference includes the relocation of students, which is required for the Veterans Memorial School site, the relocation of the sports field, which is required for the F2 option as well. And we're demoing, in both options, we would be demoing both schools. So the $4,231,000 is for student relocation and fall relocation. Are any questions?
Does the, the cost include the playground, like the swings and the climbing, like they have at West Parish?
Yes.
And does the cost include like a shower and the nurses?
Yes.
Things like that, those kind of types of amenities?
Yes, everything that's in the, everything that's in the space program is included in the building. And then for site amenities, we always include the playgrounds, in fact, we include two playgrounds in this particular, in both options. One would be for younger students, K through 1, and one is for older students. Similar to what you have over at West Parish, where you have two playgrounds in two areas, so that if you have a large number of students out, there's a variety of play areas, as well as, so it's play equipment, as well as hardscape, things like foursquare and basketball and those kinds of things are all included in the cost estimates. And similar to West Parish, the hardscape is actually just part of the emergency access road, so we turned it into play space, but it serves a dual purpose. Any other questions? Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
I know as I was saying.
Oh, yeah. Brief. We then had, after we received this presentation, we did have a discussion about additional factors that had, were, should be taken into consideration, that had changed since we did the original evaluation of all the 14 original sites, and that whole checklist of, and scoring sheets. And you want to go through that?
Sure. And these are independent of the complicated and sophisticated criteria by which we went 14 to 9 to 2. But one of the, some of the things that came out, and you mentioned just a little while ago about easement and access, that the Schoolhouse Road Green Street site would need to be negotiated with a developer, and the developer would have some leverage in that particular matter. In terms of utilities, there's already a school at Veterans on a pre-existing site, which means that the utilities and the extensions are readily accessible, whereas the Schoolhouse Road and Green Street site, we would have to put in utilities, extensions, those would not be reimbursable. Another issue that came up was proximity and the number of students, and we were able to bisect the location of the students relative to East Gloucester and the Veterans site, and East Gloucester and the Schoolhouse Road Green Street site. And the reality is that 60% of the students that attend East Gloucester live closer to Veterans than they do to the school that they attend. That changes when we compare East Gloucester with the Schoolhouse Road Green Street site. Only 45% are closer to the proposed site in that particular area. And this has implications for transportation, for cost, the potential number of walkers, and traffic as well. Potentially, it's our belief that there would simply be more walkers being able to go to the Veterans site. We talked a little bit about geotechnical aspects, soil stabilization, it's, that's a wash, whatever, I mean, you can certainly go into the details of that. In terms of environmental impact, there is a strong sense that there would be more environmental impact on the Schoolhouse Road Green Street site, bernal ponds, wildlife, trees. So we do sense, and the, many of the folks from Green Street spoke to many of these issues, that there would be more of an environmental impact at one site over the other. In terms of existing roadway structures in both areas, there are questions over traffic, neighborhood streets, access points, impact on neighborhoods. But the Green Street option would be actually more difficult to assess long-term traffic due to all of the existing and potential additional projects in that particular area. And then there was the issue, issues of public input, which we all received considerable amount of information from one particular neighborhood. And there's concern about multiple changes that have been going on and would continue at Schoolhouse Road Green Street. The Green Street Park is a kind of a sacred place for many of these folks, it's an active recreational site for an entire neighborhood, and there are a multitude of sports and leagues that participate in that area as well. There is of course a softball at the Veterans site, it's a citywide league, and as has been mentioned, there will be preparations and there is budget already in the project to make sure that there is more than adequate replacement for that. There is, as mentioned, extensive development in one area over the other, and therefore less of an overall impact on the neighborhood. At the Schoolhouse Road Green Street site, there would be in effect a 100% change if you were to bring the school there, whereas at the Veterans site, we're really talking about a 50% increase because we're combining and moving East Gloucester over to the Veterans site. There would be a potentially longer construction schedule at Veterans, but my understanding is that that would not take away from the timeline, which is to try to open the school in the fall of 2023.
That's great, the construction schedule would be the same amount of time, we've budgeted two years, but you would have to move students off-site prior to that.
And as we bring the students off-site, there is the swing space, and as Michelle mentioned, it is included in the, in the cost. One of the things that was mentioned in the overall evaluation criteria at our last meeting is that there was a bit of a double dip in that the swing space issue took away points for the Veterans site in two separate areas, one in the educational programming and the other in the...
So one was the cost impact, and the second was the impact of students during, during school time.
Right, right. So it had an effect. Equally as important however, is the West Parish experience, and they went over, they went downtown, and they had a remarkably positive experience. So it is disruptive, but at the same time, if we can... if we can reproduce the type of schooling that West Parish experienced when they were at St. Anne's, so be it. And we have spoken with St. Anne's, and they will be available if and when the time should come. The Veterans option, as stated, does include the cost to relocate the ball field and the swing spaces part of the project scope. We talked about the loss of green space a couple or three times and the amount of public use. There are new, there is new housing going in over in that area as well, near the YMCA project. And it's, in all likelihood, those people are going to be interested and have the need for some recreational space as well. And I mentioned the 50% change in Veterans versus the 100%. So school on an existing school site ultimately was deemed preferential. And the vote was unanimous, 14 to 0, in favor of the Veterans site.
Okay, so...
I have some questions.
Okay, questions?
Sure. So I haven't heard any mention about the status of Veterans site being, half the site being deeded to the city for just as a playground. And the potential that that would require an act of state legislature to remove. Was that addressed one way or the other? Is that a reality or is that misinformation?
The, the second motion that came out of the building committee was, and we'll be voting on that tonight because we'll need to ask the city to do it. And it was just, let's see. To request from the city council to transfer the care, custody, and control of the selected site to the school committee for the purpose of use as a school by taking all necessary steps in the transfer, including but not limited to an Article 97 disposition.
So includes, so it has been determined that that has to be done?
Well, it's, it's for the city to determine whether that has to be done. It's our opinion that it might, that we would think it would have to be done, but...
So what happens in the MSBA process if a year from now, we haven't been able to assemble two-thirds of the state's legislature to vote to remove the site as a designated playground, and we can't move forward with, you know, what we need to do? Are we back at square one? Or do we just get to pause until the state legislature does what they need to do to release this?
Okay. Tom would be best to answer that.
Sure, sure. I think the disposition of the land or the ownership, if there are issues, would need to be clarified before the, the vote would go to the board. So, you know, before the MSBA would make their approval for a project scope and budget agreement, that would need to be clarified.
And when are our timeline, are we expecting that vote now?
I'd have to go back and look at the schedule.
February 2020?
For the project scope and budget that's May?
It's later in the year.
Yeah, it's around May or April.
Has anyone looked into the feasibility of getting the state legislature to act on this before May of 2020?
Yes.
If you don't hear requests, that's not feasible?
It's, according to Senator Tarr's office, the timeline is feasible.
I look at the attendance records for those meetings and the rarity with two-thirds of the legislatures are actually present at one meeting, let alone to vote at that point unanimously for anything, you know? So that's just a, I'm surprised that wasn't, you know, that seems to be a pretty big question mark with hanging over the site.
Chair, just to mention that legal council, city council, that informed us that we would have, in all likelihood, would be the conservative, surest way of going about the business through Article 97, whether we chose the Veterans site or the Schoolhouse Road, Green Street site.
It would apply to either site?
Whether it deeds?
It would actually apply to all three sites.
Yeah. Well, no, but, so you saw, so, you know, I'll take my hand. I reviewed the title to all three sites. Now, though, I understand there was an internal, like a playground dedication. There was no, I couldn't find a deed where there's actually a deed restriction for any part of Green Street to be used as a playground. Did the committee find deeds restricting it?
It's, it's open space, so it would have applied regardless through use. So it would have applied, it applies to all three sites. So we would have got that decision in the manner of the site we chose.
The issue with Article 97 is it used to be considered that it was, it was to protect things like watershed and parks. But then there was a ruling in 2017 which said that if there was history of land being used for open space, then that it could be considered and might require a 97. It was case law, so it isn't law where it says that. And basically, the case was decided because they had taken a federal grant. And that was the deciding factor in 2017. But the consensus of the committee is that it's, it would make more sense to go forward with the Article 97 disposition rather than not and then have a possible regulation. So it was weighed.
I have more questions, but if you want to go like in a round on any one of them.
Well, well, we need to make more, we could make, if you have questions?
I have questions.
Okay. And does anybody else have questions?
So it's also my understanding that neither the Green Street site nor the Veterans site had a completed traffic study performed prior to the building committee voting. Is that accurate?
The traffic study cannot be completed because school didn't start until September. You can't do the traffic study at the beginning of school because traffic, as we all know, you have new people arriving, so you have to wait for traffic to settle. Usually, that's the third or fourth week of school. We actually hit a holiday and then a couple of parent-teacher meeting days on that week that we had originally earmarked for that. So it can't be done then. It can't be done within certain day, certain time of days off. So it has not been done completely, but we have gone out there to study the traffic flow that is on both sites. And again, mentioning the fact that the proposed development out in, or potential development out off of the Green Street site is unknown to us at this point, all of what traffic that brings. So we can only give an estimate. But we do know that we would be increasing the traffic there by 100% for the combined the two schools. And over at Veterans site, we would be increasing by 50%. We've also given our plans to our traffic engineer to help us talk about traffic mitigation pieces. And so we've been studying both sites.
So a concern is the information in the building committee. First off, it's 100% increase of veterans. It's 220 plus 220 is 100% increase. It's an infinite increase.
If you're bringing one school in, so you're increasing by 50%.
If you have 220 and you go to 440, that's 100% increase, right? From 0 to 440 is infinite, right? An infinite increase in degrees. In any event, the entire development off of Fuller and Gloucester Crossing, you know, unlike this one, you can't get those things done without traffic studies that have been vetted by third-party reviewers. So there are, on file with the city, complete traffic studies.
Yes.
So why is it only an estimate? We know what the traffic studies are saying are going to happen to those sites.
So we reviewed all the, we reviewed all the traffic information that you have currently. And we've looked at the ongoing traffic on those sites. And we've taken all of that into consideration. So we have draft reports that we've talked about. We just don't have the final reports completed.
So I was just questioning why it was suggested that there was more of an unknown in Green Street? When Green Street does have two within the last 10 years, very comprehensive traffic studies about that rotary, the 120 extensions, and Schoolhouse Road traffic flow.
It also has land that has potential for further development, which we don't have, which could be anything.
So that was, the last parcel is built into the original 2007 traffic studies. The damages were done when the entire left across we built out. So if anything, it's operating at less than the capacity of being shown in those traffic studies. So I was just, I thought it was interesting that you'd say it's more of an estimate up there when there's probably more scientific data up there of what the traffic flow is and is not on that rotary and Schoolhouse Road. I'm also curious about the considerations. Actually, no, that's not a question of the motion. I'm sorry for that. The only other question I had was the criteria, the original criteria that was used, was that, in your, in your experience, was it standard criteria that most regions or districts would use as far as determining how to score potential schools and school sites?
Yes.
That question was also asked and was on the website as well. It said it is a, it is a best practice in the industry. It was, we have to start.
Thank you. I have only questions.
Okay, all right. We can get to deliberations. Any other questions? So the motion before us is, okay. We need to vote to authorize, to confirm, actually, what our vote would be to confirm the vote by this building committee. And the vote by the building committee was to vote, to authorize Doran Whittier in CBR hearing to submit the F2 Veterans Memorial Site option to the MSBA as part of the preferred schematic report. And just to be clear, our vote is yes or no. It's not anything other than, it's either yes or no.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I have a statement to read because I don't know how much of a conversation I could have tonight. So I just want to read this and put my thoughts and my conclusion into the record as my testimony tonight for this vote. I've been through a lot for the past couple weeks and did not plan on coming out tonight. But knowing this vote was on the agenda, I felt I did not have a choice. I put my thoughts to paper. Knowing there's so much on my mind, and I wanted my message and reason for my vote to be clear. Years ago, a very intelligent and compassionate man, Judge David Harrison, taught me about a valuable lesson. Even though the courthouse closed at 4:30, we were often there until 7:00 PM at night, addressing the needs for kids and their families. And that was okay because what I learned was putting your time into the life of a child often yields great results. Tonight, I want to take the time to be part of this important discussion and vote and be part of a decision that is educationally right and very important for our kids. Not just the kids we know today, but the kids, our kids, the kids of the future generations in Gloucester. Having grown up in Portage Hill, I'm very familiar with the Green Street property and the Veterans School property. I attended Veterans School and so did my son. Choosing the site was very easy for me. While Green Street seemed hopeful compared to other properties we had considered, as soon as I learned Veterans was a viable option, to me, it was a no-brainer to utilize property already used as a school to build a combined school. I know building on Meadows Field is disappointing to many, but this is how I've come to terms with it. The rock and plaque at the top of the hill at Veterans School states Meadows Memorial was dedicated as a playground, not a field for lights for softball. Back in the '30s and '50s, I'm sure the use it has today was not considered, but rather used for a playground for kids and adults to play. I completely respect Mr. Meadows and truly believe if he were here today and realized the importance of this project, he would be okay knowing kids will continue to play on the property both during and after school hours. Out of respect for the light Meadows Field, there's a plan to relocate the field and use for the Gloucester community, but the playgrounds will still be in its same location. There will be playgrounds when the school is built. As far as, as far as we know from the West Parish project, playgrounds will have the swings, slides, and other adventurous climbing mechanism and balancing theme structures. Today, I visited Veterans while research was in session. I observed almost all the kids playing on these structures while only a few were out in the field. Kids also played on the cement surrounding the school, just as I have fond memories of playing hopscotch and jump rope when I was a student at the same school. While I was at the school, I also observed the current building and its design. Seeing each classroom have its own door entrance into each class and the large windows that showed directly into the classroom was concerning to say the least. In today's world, with the concern for student safety, having immediate access through doors and windows made of glass that can easily be shaded directly into almost all classrooms is unacceptable. A new school will bring a safer design and glazed windows made of stronger, safer material. A new school will also bring change we need to keep our and your kids safe. A quick tour of the school easily revealed that there's not enough space for the daily educational needs. We, as adults, remember classrooms as lines of desks pointing towards a teacher. We all know that is not how it works today. Kids sit in groups with multitude of differentiation to address the learning needs of all the kids in the classroom. When we were in school, kids with disabilities often attended their own classrooms. We know today, things have changed and kids are rightfully integrated. New schools provide ADA access in a way our current buildings don't. A new building will likely bring enhancements for sound, wider doorways, space for one-on-one therapy, a shower in the nurse's station to address the needs of those who get soiled, and much more. This change is the way we educate today as opposed to the way we did when we were in school, requires additional considerations to the space we need. And that's what the vote is about, having the space we need to give our kids the best educational opportunities. Many are against the combination of schools. They want neighborhood schools. Veterans is in a near-downtown neighborhood, not a commercial property, but an old neighborhood filled with culture. There are those who will say, by closing East Gloucester, they're losing their neighborhood school. While there's something true to that statement, I reflect again on West Parish. The large area it currently serves, almost all of the very large area on the other side of the Boulevard Bridge attends West Parish. Veteran and East Gloucester are not far from one another, probably less than a mile by the way the crow flies. If West Parish is considered a neighborhood school with this large area, why can't a new school that serves most of East Gloucester students be considered a neighborhood school? I say it can. As a wife of a carpenter, I completely understand when those say we can just remodel what we have. Dump $10 million into each school and they will be great again. If we can remodel our homes, why can't we remodel our schools? We have learned that because of Massachusetts code regulations, we cannot remodel to the extent we need to because of the large amount of work that is required is likely more than 30% of the current value of the building. Therefore, triggering many updates, which is not as cost-effective as building a new school. Because the change, because of this change in regulation is a change that puts us in a position to build, to get the most for taxpayers' money. I know many say that the process that got us here tonight was not the best and know that I agree. But as we make this decision on location, I want you all to think and consider the consequence of not getting a new school because we refuse to make changes. If we regionalize with Rockwell, we will still need space of this school. Having 800 kids mostly bused to one location at Beaman is not a good solution. And you can be sure that amount of traffic in one neighborhood will generate just as much pushback from neighbors as it did from the Green Street location. There are no other locations to consider. There are no other opportunities to receive reimbursement for the cost of a building. Many cities and towns jump on this opportunity to work with MSBA for good reason. Essex Tech did, and look what they have. West Parish did, and look what they have. Parents want functional, clean, safe buildings with adequate educational space for our children to thrive, be competitive with all of what other Massachusetts communities have or want. That is what we will get with consolidation. Whether we like it or not, changes come. Although we try to hold on to the best practice of the past, change is inevitable. The world is not the same place it was years ago. And what was good for us then is not good enough for our students now. For these reasons and many more, I will be voting yes to build a consolidated school at the Veterans site.
So I'll start. You know, I think the building committees owe a big thank you. They met a lot. I tried to attend as many meetings I could. And I know they met a lot of times that even I wasn't able to attend. I, I'm still disappointed in the outcome that we're asked to vote on tonight. And I think it's important to discuss, you know, from what I have observed attending these meetings, reading when I could minutes in the alternative. The path, as I see it, is, you know, to use Dr. Sapphire's words, The path, as I see it, is, you know, to use Dr. Sapphire's words, criteria, very sophisticated criteria was set out over the course of several meetings, integrating, again, what we heard tonight, called best practices for determining a school design, school site, et cetera. And then, everything was scored, and the scores came out, and there was a clear winner. Green Street scored higher than any other site and was $5 million cheaper than the next highest-scoring site. So I was, you know, a little bewildered when the conversation continued after that. I could see if maybe Green Street scored higher but was, you know, $5 million more expensive, maybe you start, you know, parsing out the two options, but this was a higher-scoring school for less money to the taxpayers. But the discussion kept going, and I think the reason behind it was, you know, you can go with the other reasons, but the reality was, the Green Street neighborhood was louder. There was about 30 very loud residents who made a lot of noise about the Green Street construction site. And I think that unfortunately, some of their concerns, you know, were absolutely legitimate. You know, like, it'll be a construction site and that's gonna suck for them, right? But that's a temporary concern. This school, wherever it gets built, is gonna service roughly 5,000 children over the next 50 years. And so if the experience these 5,000 children over the next five decades are gonna get is being reduced to make sure that 30 or so residents have an easier two or three years, I think that's an improper balance. The Green Street site has more parking, as we're seeing with West Parish. We see what happens when we build a site, again, you know, I'm alarmed we're doing a traffic study because West Parish has severe traffic issues and terrible on-site circulation, and here we're picking the option that has 20 fewer parking spots and a much smaller drive-in than the Green Street site has. There's, aside from the required play spaces, there's no outdoor amenities. We're about to build an elementary school that has no ball fields, no nature around. You talked to anyone at Plum Cove about the beauty of being up there next to the woods. This was a chance to kind of replicate that here in the city, cut in some trails into the forest. I think if you were to level that and keep that all green space, you'd still have more green space at Green Street after you were done building the school than you were in the entire vet site. We're talking about taking away this green space from the Green Street neighborhood. Well, we're not taking it away. You're reducing some of the field, and I think you're reducing a little bit of the forest, but you're still having a full ball field, acres of forest land. Veterans, that neighborhood has one ball field. That's it. And now it's going to zero. Green Street is going from two ball fields to one ball field, which is a reduction, but Veterans is an elimination. There's also no ability at the Veterans Site to expand this school if in the future Gloucester sees an influx of families moving in. At the Green Street site, there's room for expansion. And then, I know we can look at the projections, but, you know, I sat in the audience at Cairo's in 2011 and begged this committee not to surplus the fuller land, and I said, "You have no idea what you're gonna need for elementary schools." And not one, but two committee members responded to me that day saying, "We know we're never gonna need 10 acres ever again." And then when we started this process, our minimum outlook was for 10 acres, right? So we don't tell them that we don't, you know, we know we're not gonna need, we're not gonna need to expand this school. We don't know. Green Street has that capacity, Veterans does not. And so, you know, then we start looking into the Veterans Site itself, and in addition to charging the city $5 million that we otherwise don't have to spend, that's money we do not have to spend, but we're gonna elect to throw $5 million extra on the tax levy for 20 years, you know, over the course of 20 years, that we don't have to spend. And we're gonna make, you know, children go to St. Anne's for two years. And I want to hear how awesome St. Anne's is because if really old, non-compliant downtown schools were that great, we wouldn't be replacing Veterans in the first place. We go, "These are great downtown dilapidated schools." These two years at St. Anne's are, you know, are not this fashion educational, an oasis, "Oh, awesome, two years at St. Anne's." The reason that school couldn't keep enough students paying to go there to even stay open, right? It's not a great school site. To subject, you know, six grades of children for two years to that when you otherwise do not have to, I think is irresponsible. And I just don't think that any of these, you know, I don't think any of these were properly weighed. What really kind of blows my mind is that after the score came out and we started looking, you know, the score came out and all of a sudden we came up with the answer that, you know, I think certain people in power didn't want. And so it became, "How do we put a thumb on this scale and get the answer that we do want?" And so all of a sudden, new criteria came out, and this was, you know...
This was, I really object to that. I do object to what you're saying.
Did you have a meeting with the mayor and Dr. Sapphire where she told you her preference was Veterans? Did you have that meeting?
We had a meeting...
This is not a trial. This is not a trial.
We have meetings to inform the mayor and the administration of what the building committee is doing.
Did she say preference in that meeting?
She may have.
Yeah.
It didn't affect, it did not affect the...
So, I'm sorry. So, my question or my issue is that if these things are so important, if the walkability of vets, I know we'd like to point out that more East Gloucester students live closer to the vets than to Green Street. We don't talk about how more vet students live closer to Green Street than vets. We don't talk about that. It doesn't help the narrative, right? But if all these things are so important, you know, whether it was a school site already, again, Schoolhouse Road up until 10 years ago had a 550-student elementary there. 15 years ago, it had 800-student elementary there. So don't say Schoolhouse Road has never had a school up there before. If all these things were so important that they can overcome a $5 million price difference and four points on that sophisticated scoring we did, if they're so important, why weren't they part of the original criteria? Why weren't the rest of the sites given the same, the same look? This, again, these things you cited at Veterans are allegedly worth more than $5 million and worth more, worth putting kids in swing space and worth getting a lower-scoring site for whatever these new criteria are. And that just seems kind of bogus. You had a very sophisticated, to use your words, best practices scoring system. The answer came out. For some reason, some people didn't like it, and this new answer was, you know, was reached. And so I'm really disappointed. I thought the building committee was doing really good work, and then at the end, we took a weird turn to the side and ended up at Vets, and that's disappointing.
How easy is it for a sex offender to walk into Starbucks and TJ Maxx and all the stores that are up there right now? Think about that. And how close it is to a school if the school is at Green Street. So rather than putting everyone down for making this awful decision to go to Veterans, think it through like a lot of people are doing.
Is this something I haven't thought this through?
All right.
No, I think you're just looking for a controversy on some backdoor conversation.
Again, not you, a children, go to a school. I do, right? I'd be the best thing for this case. Okay.
Anybody else like to weigh in on this motion?
Yeah. Some may feel like that. I just want to say thank you to the building committee for your hard work, your patience, your professionalism, and your dedication you have shown throughout this whole process so far. I am going to support the school location being at the current Veterans Memorial School for three solid reasons, which are the same that has already been discussed. There's already a school there. I'm confident in the design of the traffic flow. I know we're talking about traffic, but with the design of the traffic flow coming into the school and then they'll go around and then come back out is way better than dropping out kids in the middle of the street right now that parents are doing, or to the side of the street that parents do now. It's much more safe for the students and for the neighborhood. This school will provide better educational services to more school students at the same time. We have great families, great students, great teachers, and great staff. In order for them to continue to be great, they need to have a school that isn't falling down around them, a school that can help provide a 21st century education, a school that speaks of success. This is a school that will bring two school communities together. Together is the only way to make our community the best it can be. New schools do that for our community, and I'm supporting the school at Veterans.
Anyone else? You know, right from the get-go, it was obvious even before the building committee was put together, it was the discussions for a school, a site for a school was going to be needed, and many were spoiled. I agree that it would be nice if the cost wasn't higher, but I understand that, you know, with the location there, you do need the swing space, which adds considerable to that higher cost. And I do believe that the building committee did explore all the doable options for the building, the site selection. It wasn't easy. They were accused of, you know, an awful lot of nefarious dealings when basically they're volunteering their time to try to do something for the benefit of the students of the city. And I really don't understand where the conspiracy attitudes came from, especially considering that it was towards neighbors. It really was quite surprising, a little bit disappointing. The East Gloucester location is just absolutely awful right now. Teachers can't even park. There's no parking space for teachers. So, and I can't imagine if today we tried to build a school on that site, how, what we would hear about that. I did, I did think, you know, I do have a contractor's license and, you know, renovation wasn't true, but then, you know, you gotta look at things, and looking at the buildings themselves and the type of construction they were, it immediately became apparent that that was not an option. It would be just astronomically more expensive. You know, you just, you just have to use the high school renovation, you know. The ninth year, that was the high school renovation. You know, we had years of, it's taken us years to get rid of the toxins in that school, and the animals' cost overruns were just outrageous. We're still paying for them. So, I do believe that we can move the, I don't see why we can't move the lights hardware to a relocation and rededicate either back, that school location or somewhere else to ten of Meadows. There's been, there was a disturbing article in Paper Lab last week that talked about, you know, abandon MSBA because it costs us a lot more money. That is just ludicrous. It's just, it doesn't, there's absolutely nothing that makes any sense when that statement gets made. It's just like in North Gloucester, we didn't opt to Seward when they were offering us free money to do it. No, now we got, it cost us $100 million because we didn't take the money. That's brilliant. Let's go back in. You know, and then bells and whistles. Oh, yeah. Lots of good bells and whistles in there, like a safe and secure entrance, healthy air exchange, appropriate spending specialist spaces, student and faculty restrooms. You know, we hear about faculty, they have one restroom that's in the faculty lounge. Boy, that offers an awful lot of privacy, doesn't it? You know, communication systems for safety, modern utilities, and, while not perfect, better traffic flow. You know, I believe, knowing the people who were on the committee, that transparency was completely there. You know, you don't hear what you don't listen for, and I've found through my years of public service, is that people just want to make up their minds before they even come to a meeting that you've already, that you haven't done the work that you've already done. So, I have full confidence that the committee made the right decision on the selection. I wish the cost hadn't been higher, but I will support Meadows' decision.
As you know, I served on the building committee, and the process itself took a long time and was very thorough. So, all the scoring and all the discussions and all the kind of really examining, how do we do things and how do we do things better in a new school and what do we want to provide our children and, you know, what is the goal of how we educate our kids and how do we design a school to complete that? All those conversations were very valuable to the end result of what hopefully is on the horizon of a school that will get approved by the voters. I will say, this process of having different designs and different sites, to me, was very eye-opening. What I thought was never possible four months ago and where the obvious answer was clearly was not the obvious answer, and my, my whole feeling on, "I'm leaning here, I'm leaning there," as information got gathered, I think my, my leanings towards one solution or another changed probably four times. I think the reason that I wholeheartedly support Veterans is the proximity of students. I just think having kids, being able to walk to school these days, we do safe walks to school from far distances so our kids get exercise, and we talk about accessibility for families that maybe don't drive. I think having a school as convenient as possible to many of our families with greatest need is the best gift we can give those families. It's an existing school. It's gonna be a lovely site for another lovely school, and it's not gonna be a Taj Mahal, as I've heard West Parish referred to. There are no bells and whistles at West Parish that aren't required for education. It may look nice, and maybe we're not used to things looking nice, but quite honestly, I'm delighted our kids get to walk into a place that shows pride and attractiveness, and same with our families. And we can't apologize for having things look nice. That's what we should be expecting for our kids. We did consider a lot of feedback, and we did have overwhelming feedback. Much of it was negative about, "Don't do it here, don't do it there," and the reasons why people wanted to protect what was emotionally very near and dear to them and probably practically very near and dear to them. But I think the thing that resonated most with me is comments of, "Do the least harm." People did not care where the site went. Give us a new school. Do the least harm. You have a tough decision. And I think Veterans accomplishes that. It takes less of the open space. It maximizes, I think, the greatest use of the Veterans Site. I think it would have been a really huge change for that site for many reasons. I think everybody's kids play sport on there at one time or another, or two sports or four sports. So there's reasons why having that large field and leaving it intact, I firmly believe it would have been a lovely school site as well, but I think Veterans, to me, won over because of its walkability and its location of the students. So, I'm excited for our children to have this opportunity. We still have a long way to go, but I am excited for kids who won't have to, you know, wait for the art to be, art project to be set up, and then they do their art in a rush, and then it has to be broken down before the next class begins, and the poor art teachers who never, ever have a home and the ability to really be ready for the kids to walk in and greet them with the project ready to go. There are just so many examples of how our delivery of education is so far for what our kids deserve, and I take my hat off to all the teachers who have really stuck it out despite really awful conditions to teach in, and they may do, and they may be great students, and they've done great work in terms of teaching, and we say, "Doesn't matter where they teach, their teachers, it's all about the teachers." And quite honestly, it is about the teachers. We want the space for them as much as we want it for our children. So, of course, I'm gonna be supporting this.
So, just to be clear, we voted a long time ago that we needed new schools. We voted a long time ago about consolidation. What we're voting on tonight is yes and no on whether we approve of the Veterans Site for the new school. And the issue here is, that has been brought up, is the cost difference. And essentially, the cost of the building is negligible. The cost of building the building at Green Street or at Veterans is negligible. It's the costs of doing the other things that add cost to the Veterans Site. And there's, if you had that slide up there, I think it was $3.8 million of the 7.3 difference was additional cost, and that's the swing space and the relocation, the ball field. And those numbers are unknowns, although we think we can go to St. Anne's. We don't know we can go to St. Anne's. We don't know that we can get a waiver from the state to use it again as a temporary school. So those numbers are very high. We don't know, the numbers on the ball field are extremely high, in my opinion, but they're conservative numbers because they don't know where the ball field's gonna go, what's gonna be involved in doing it. So there's, there's, correct me if I'm wrong, $3.8 million or 3.? No, but just on that one line of additional cost, the difference between the two sites. It's 3.8 of that difference in cost of 4.3 is all about the ball fields and the swing space. And I believe, I believe that these numbers can be reduced substantially. This is a process. We're not building the school tomorrow at Veterans. There's still a lot of work to be done. There is the issue, and we'll bring that up, and I'll weigh in on that about the transfer of the lien, and that's another issue, but it's not part of this discussion because it would have applied to either one. So I'm gonna support this. I think that the educational impact in the community is basically gonna be the same. I think that we are going, one of the pieces of this process is we are gonna have to present to the community an overwhelming argument that they should pay more money in their taxes to build this school. And that's going to be the make or break issue. It's not gonna be where we pick it to go. It's gonna be whether people are willing to pay for it. And I think we're gonna have more success convincing people to build a school at the Veterans Site than we are at Green Street, so I'm gonna support this. veterans site than we are at Green Street, so I'm going to support this. So, I'm going to call a vote. So I'll just remind people, this is a motion to approve, the motion, and from the building committee, which was to authorize Dorn Whittier and CBR Herry to submit the F2 Veterans Memorial Site option to the MSBA, the district's thematic report. That's the motion. Sure. Roll call?
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet?
Yes.
Kathy Lanson?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman Koch?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
And Mr. Calazza?
No.
It passes. Five to one. So, I know that, I would like to take up the motion, the second motion that came out of the building committee now, and that is a motion is to recommend, to request from the city council to transfer the care and custody and control of the selected site. And the reason it says selected site, we could put in the F2 site in that motion, but when this was passed, it applied to either site. To the school committee for the purpose of use as a school by taking all necessary steps in the transfer, including but not limited to Article 97 disposition.
Second?
Discussion.
It's not on the agenda.
It is. It is to approve all the motions from the building committee.
Oh, this is confirmation, recommendation?
Yeah, that's confirmation and a recommendation.
This is a recommendation. There were two recommendations.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it.
So, same discussion. Roll.
Just to reiterate, I hope that the city moves with great haste in getting, there's a Chapter 97 filing needs to be made with the state legislature. I hope we do it as quickly as possible. I'm happy to hear the Senator Tarz office says that the May 2020 deadline is a feasible deadline. Nevertheless, we should, I hope we act like it's not and really try and, you know, fire drill this to see if we can get this through.
So, just so people are clear, Article 97 is an article in the Constitution of the Massachusetts state law and it is in there, I don't have it in front of me to read it, but it is to provide protection to essentially park lands and watershed. And it has been challenged a number of times and it was challenged in 2013 and the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that the, I can't remember which town it was.
Westfield.
Westfield could use what had been used as a playground previously for school purposes. In 2017, I'm sure that wasn't Westfield, that was Westfield, it was another town in 2013. And in 2017, they expanded the definition of the land and basically said it didn't have to be designated from the get-go as park or watershed, it had to do with usage, which is why we, both of these parcels would be required, we would have to, we might have to. Now, there's a legal case that we wouldn't have to. The decision of the building committee was that we would be better off recommending that we do this rather than risk the possible legal case.
Another question. When you go to Green Street and read the Janine Delcet plaque, it clearly states on there that there was funding received to make that a dedicated space. Is that the same deal for Matos?
The title report, I can explain there. The title report that we got for Green Street did indicate that about 43,000 square feet of land had been dedicated, but there's 16 acres there, so it was never intended to use that piece. That's the playground that's over by Little Park, right off Green Street.
No.
So I'm just saying, so we weren't going to, you know, that could have been just it. But the issue with the Green Street land is the same as the issue with Matos Field is that it has been used for a period of time, a substantial period of time, as open space and somebody could make the case that that constituted, that the city was going to use it as open space.
Just a, but more importantly, with the maybe, I understand that that's, there's literally a deed on record for four uses of playground, right? And that, even the 2013 case, I think that would still.
I can explain that, okay. So here's the history of the veterans memorial site. It was built from Cape Pondice in 2000, in 1924. And it was bought and there was no, there was, there's nothing on the title that indicated. It was a pond, okay, and there was a dam.
Was it bought for a dollar?
It was bought for a dollar. And the dam is where the school is now. In 1930, whatever it says on the plaque, 36, 37, they dedicated the playground. The playground that they dedicated was on the dam, it was still a pond where the field is, it was on the dam where the school is now. They dedicated it as Matos Playground, okay? That was where the playground was that was dedicated, where the school was. When they, okay, and they split, for some reason, they split the property at that point. I'm not clear on that. But the pond, or maybe, no, they didn't split the property then. In 1954, when they started to build the school, they, they went to the state and got permission to use, and when they dedicated, they dedicated the playground that was there. In 54, they got permission from the state to override that dedication. Okay, so that was done. The piece where the field is has never been dedicated and/or deeded as anything than a pond. They happened to fill it in when they built the school and they built a softball field there. They built a softball field there as part of the school because in the 50s, they required that you have large outdoor play spaces for schools. So, the field was made a field because the school was built, the school was built on the land that had been dedicated to the playground and they got that rescinded in 1956, I believe. That's the way things stand right now. So there's no deeded, there's no deeded or dedication to Matos Ball Field.
Got you.
Doesn't exist. And so, that's where we're at today. So, the legal cases, well, it was always part of the school and intended to be part of the school, we could just take it. We asking for the 97, Article 97, just to be very clear and transparent about what we're doing. So that's what we're voting on now is that we would have to transfer, the school has to be in possession of anything we build a school, you know, just like when we, you know, we would have to do this anyway. So we have, the city has to transfer, right now, Matos Field is under the DPW. They have to basically sign it over to us. So that's what we're voting on. We're asking the city to understand that we support a 97, but it's still up to them to decide whether they're going to do it. But the process for the 97 is that there has to be a vote, there would have to be a vote either way, 97 and non-97, from the city council transfer lien. If they're going to ask for an Article 97 disposition, then it has, they have to file that with our senator and representative and they have to schedule it. What I was told of Senator Tarz's office is that could be, if we got it, if the city council approved it by the middle of November, then they could get it before the legislature in January. So that's what I know. Any other questions or discussion, consideration?
Does this need to be reconsidered? Does it have to go to the city council or any way?
They are not planning on putting it into the mayor's report until the November of the year, so no.
So, we can take a rule by minutes?
Well, yeah.
Or maybe?
We can do it.
Only because, you know, if the mayor's report hits the November, that's referral, that's consent agenda, straight vote, refer to subcommittee, probably P and D and probably B and F also, right? It's about maybe a third week of November to do it. We'll be back to city council until mid-December.
Yeah, we'll get a reconsideration, that's fine.
Like fire drill, like, you know.
So on the motion, on the motion, did we make the motion?
We did, yes.
And we got a second?
Do you do a roll call, please?
And we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Sweet?
Yes.
Kathy Lanson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Calazza?
Yes.
It passes six to zero.
Motion reconsidered.
Second?
Do we need a roll call for this? Do you want a roll call?
Sure.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Gross?
No.
Ms. Sweet?
No.
Kathy Lanson?
No.
Chairman Koch?
Go.
Ms. Prince?
No.
And Mr. Calazza?
No.
It fails six to zero. And we'll move on to, go on? To MCAS. I appreciate all the principals waiting patiently, listening to all of this, but it's important. MCAS.
I'll do a brief presentation in English of the process and how the evaluation is scored. We'll go through the district at each school and after each school, we'll stop and the principals have some comments to make or have questions for the particular administrators of the buildings, then we can take them up to that particular point in time. When thinking about this, the MCAS system and the point system and all that kind of business, there's really only one thing that I think we need to consider and that's what progress is being made towards the improvement expectations that the state has set forth, right? How much progress by percentage? If you're supposed to get here, by what percent did you get there? That's really what it's all about. And in the areas where we're being scored with respect to how much progress did we make towards those goals, you've got the areas that you see in the various colors. You've got the achievement, which is very traditional, we're used to that, a slightly different measure, get English language arts, mathematics and science. Then there's also growth, which is soon growth percentile, and you've heard about SGP over the course of a number of years as well. For the high school, there's the, and for the district, there's the high school completion, the four-year cohort, also the extended students who went for the fifth year and graduated in addition to those that might be remaining in school beyond that fifth year as well. English language based upon specific assessments, the MCAS, part of the overall evaluation has to do with English language proficiency and to what extent our English language learners are moving toward the expected targets as well. And then there are some additional factors, chronic absenteeism, which is defined as absenteeism in excess of 10 absences per year. That's at all schools, all levels. And then in the high school, there's the advanced coursework completion as well. Each of these has a different proportion, they add them all up, they divide them, they come up with a figure, again, by what percentage has, in this instance, the district reached the target goals that were established for them. And here we can see that it's 60%. And last year, in 2018, if you look at the bottom of the page, we were actually at 39%. So when you take all these figures and put them together, we've got some highs and we've got some lows, as we'll get into when we talk about individual schools, but as a district, we have moved forward as well. So those are the areas that are assessed in the MCAS scoring. The specific categories, the columns, that are the basis for these measurements are, for each school, it's all students plus their subgroups, right? All sorts of different subgroups, you've got your high needs, English language learners, your students with disabilities, your economically disadvantaged, plus your ethnic groups as well. The second major category that goes into this targeted reaching of the expected performance targets are the lowest performing, the lowest performing 20%. So there's all sorts of data that looks at all students and the various subgroups and then there's all data that looks at the same groups of children who are the lowest 20% performance. And then there's another weighted formula that puts them all together and you get an annual percentage, which in this case is that 60% that you see at the bottom of the page. When they talk about the accountability and where we are in terms of state percentiles, it's not just 2019, it's 2018 and 19 put together. They're weighted differently, 2018 might be 40% of the overall average and 2019 might be 60%, but the numbers that we see in the accountability ratings, those are based upon two years' worth of data, okay? What percentage, and each area has, by what percentage have they reached the particular targeted improvement goals set by the state? So if we look at some of the more detailed data with respect to the, what is this thing? With respect to the district, just to get started. Now, this is not to be read, it's really to be washed over and the major area that you probably want to take a look at are the, whether they've met the target, improved below the target, exceeded the target. Again, everything is in terms, sorry to repeat myself, if everything is in terms, this was the goal, by what percentage did you accomplish that particular goal? Did your students accomplish that goal? And here you can see that we have all the different subgroups. This happens to be English language arts achievement, 2008, 2009, those are the measurements that determine whether or not we've improved and by what extent, or whether we've declined and by what extent as well. As we go through the district, you're going to see it hopscotches. At first it talks about grades three through eight, not high school, and it talks about high school, then it goes to math and does the same thing. So it's a little bit disruptive, but I think we can follow it. So looking district-wide and if we just sort of glance quickly at the English language arts achievement, we can see that in a number of areas, a number of groups, they either met the target or they improved below target and in some areas, there's been no change. District-wide, we don't see declines, we don't see any exceeded targets, but generally speaking, we're in and around where we need to be for the target. And the percentage points for those that would improve below target, it's 0.1 and so it's relatively statistically insignificant. If we move to the high school, we can see that in all areas, they've exceeded the target. One of the things that's characteristic of the MCAS, we do have issues at the high school, we do have issues at the middle school, but with the high school, they are moving in the right direction, right? The numbers, the accountability is still low, but they are finally turning it and moving in the right direction. If we then move to mathematics, this, the top graphic is the non-high school grades three through eight and again, we've had similar. three through eight, and again, we've had similar kinds of scoring, reaching, you know, what percentages, and they've improved below target, met the target, and in one instance, one of the subgroups, there was no change. If we go to mathematics achievement at the high school, again, we see that they've exceeded the target. Again, reasonably, relative to two thousand eighteen, two thousand, is statistically much better. In science achievement, we see no changes, an improvement on target, and met target, there are some areas in science that we'll be pointing out that need to be addressed as well. At the high school, again, third time, they've actually exceeded their targets for this year. We then move into the area of the student growth percentile, and student growth percentile is you take every kid that scored four hundred and ninety, every kid in the state, and then you line them all up, and then there's a median score, and the student growth percentile is relative to how did that child, or how did that school, or how did that district do on SGP, relative to how everybody else, to what extent did people improve, to what extent did they decline in their performance? It's a measure of growth, how it grew from one year to the next, that's probably the simplest definition. The state in its infinite wisdom, we've spoken years past about the normal distribution range for SGP being between forty and sixty percent. They now have decided to characterize between forty and forty-nine as typical growth but low, and fifty to fifty-nine as typical growth but high, above sixty is exceeded, and below forty is very low growth. The difference is in the number of points that they allocate, but it's, it's sort of changing the game on us, because initially forty to sixty percent was the normal distribution, now they're telling us some of it's low, some of it's high. When we look at the grades three through eight, we have typical growth across the board, though, they're referring to as low, because each of them is in that forty to forty-nine percent range. When we look at the high school, we see typical growth, low, and in a couple of areas, in the lowest performing, and students with disabilities, we're seeing low growth. So that begins to already pinpoint areas. We saw with the high school that they've exceeded growth, exceeded their targets in ELA, and they exceeded their targets in math, but there's low growth. So what exactly does that mean? What does it mean about how much those target goals were stretched or not? Nonetheless, they did exceed target, but the growth in some of the areas is low. In mathematics, across the district, we see typical growth, but it's characterized as low, and in mathematics at the high school, we're seeing low growth for lowest performing, and again, we're seeing very low growth, and those are areas of concern. The four-year cohort graduation rate, we look across the board, we see that there is a decline, in, it's in and around minus two, the economically disadvantaged is the one that leaps out as a minus six point five, the minus two point four is out of two hundred and thirty-three students, so we're really talking about single digits when it comes to the number of students increase that did not graduate within four years. The extended engagement rate, however, has exceeded the target, for kids that have not graduated in four years, but who have stuck it out, there has been an increase in the number of kids that actually have graduated. The dropout rate is more or less about the same as it was in two thousand eighteen, with the exception of the white subgroup population, number six hundred and sixty students, we see that they've exceeded the target, meaning that they have lowered the dropout rate for the greatest amount of students. Progress towards, for the district, progress toward attaining English language proficiency non-high school has declined, we've also seen a somewhat serious uptick in the number of English language learners that have entered the system, as many as twenty-two or twenty-three since the end of school over the summer, of the ninety-three students, I think I have this in the superintendent's report, of the ninety-three students that have registered since school ended last year, about twenty-five percent of a quarter of them are English language learners. We are seeing a decline at the high school in our English language learner proficiency as well, areas that certainly need to be addressed. Another recurring theme that has a very direct impact on a teacher's ability to make a difference in the classroom has to do with chronic absenteeism, and you'll see in many, many areas, in some areas, pretty good, I'm calling it particular, but you'll see that there are declining, the, the designation is that there is a decline, which means there's an increase in the number of students that are chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism defines those who are absent ten times or more.
Could I just ask a question about the Hilloshaw, should I go for a minute? At what point, how long, if, if they show up the day before MCAS?
One year.
One year, so they, they, it's one year?
They have to take math the next day.
They have to take math?
If they show up the morning of MCAS, they have to take math. In ELA, they get a year.
This is mentioned by the access score. Yes, I mentioned that, they got the outset of the access. I'm clarifying on the MCAS.
Okay.
Okay. So that brings us, while we also have a, and I'm sure that James will want to speak about this later on, in terms of advanced coursework across the various subgroups, the numbers are indicating that there is a decline in the number of students that are completing So, as I mentioned earlier, our percentage toward meeting our targets is at sixty, it was at thirty-nine last year, statistically, that's a higher number, obviously, and the reasons that it's a higher, higher number are a couple, a couple of things. Number one, we have three schools that are, continue to soar, they're in the seventieth percentile in terms of state accountability, and we have another elementary school now that has moved from the thirty-sixth to the forty-seventh percentile in one year, which we'll turn to shortly, which is, you know, I think is nothing short of remarkable. And although we're, we're still in the soup, and we are doing a turnaround in the high school, they have improved significantly in terms of the numbers, and there is a long way to go. So turning to the first school, if I can get up here. Let's turn to Beaman Memorial. And Beaman, as I mentioned, has moved from the thirty-seventh percentile to the forty-sixth percentile. Again, I, I plan on staying with this more detailed data, because I just think it's easier for speeding through this to, to see what sort of changes have taken place in the extent to which they have accomplished what they have set out to do. As we look at English Language Arts, the composite scale score, the achievement ELA, we see that we have some improved below targets, some, a couple of exceeded targets, and there was one decline in the economically disadvantaged. Moving to math, a very strong showing in that there are six of the various subgroups that have exceeded the targets that were set for them, there was a met target and an improved below target. In science, a quick look shows that they have exceeded targets there as well. Typical growth in ELA across the board, again, it's in the forties with the exception of students with disabilities. In mathematics, we have high typical growth, so I guess by degree, we're seeing a stronger performance in Beaman in the math, not to suggest that ELA wasn't a strong performance relative to past years, although there was, last year to two thousand seventeen was, you know, this is not something that just came out of the sky, so I didn't mean to, you know, describe it as such. So we have some exceeded, our economically disadvantaged in mathematics, where they had low growth in ELA, they have shown exceeded typical growth in math. The progress towards English language proficiency, however, there is a decline, it's a decline around sixteen, sixteen points, so that's something that we could need to take a, a very strong look at, and we are in fact talking about the need for more staffing this year in English language learners' education, so that is on the table. Chronic absenteeism, no change amongst all students, some improved below target, met target, but there's some declining issues as well. So, anything you want to say about the successes and where you see challenges?
I would attribute the success, really, to give credit to our instructional coach in math, I have a part-time instructional coach in math, he's done a phenomenal job with professional development for my staff, assisting me with having a series of sort of sense of urgency type meetings where we're looking at a core group of kids and making sure that they're making small incremental progress before we get to game day, which is MCAS, and helping me build a stronger RTI model, which is much like we use in literacy, and haven't seen quite as much in math, but is starting to come around across the district. So we've really strengthened that in the type of assistance, whether that's for paraprofessionals or special education staff, pushing into our classrooms to help during math time, and then grouping our children according to their needs, so that we can differentiate and tailor to what it is that they need to close some of their gaps. In terms of the raw points in our ELs, I would say that honestly, we tried a little bit of a different approach, I mean, this is something that somewhat moved to us in Gloucester as its population grows, and, you know, the first year we tried, or at least my first year, three years ago, we tried a sort of newcomer approach where we kept those students that were brand new as English speakers into their own separate program. Last year, we opened that up and just addressed it through extra time that they would have with our EL teachers, and then this past year, we tried an approach where we pushed into the classrooms more often to try to build some continuity with what was going on in the classroom, which I believe probably proved to be more difficult in our upper grades, because a lot of the instruction is very content-rich in the language, and they're not quite prepared for that. So, so we're changing course a little bit this year to hopefully adjust for that.
Questions?
I have a general question. So, these are all kind of a aggregate of the scores, so we used to have kind of the reflection of advanced proficient, right, and it needs improvement, so is there any reporting on how many kids actually exceed or have typical growth high? And I'm wondering if we're, I mean, I realize this is the first presentation, and you haven't had tons of time to dive in, but I, I know we're always, rightly so, focused on making sure everyone is at a certain performance level, achievement level, but I'm always concerned that our highest achievers, that we continue to keep them challenged and having them reach for even greater achievement. So, you know, I don't like the message, I'll just go in and pass it, because I want every kid to do as good as that kid could do. So, so I'm wondering, is there any reporting on that?
There is, I have not prepared that for tonight, and I could certainly bring that back. The reason I've chosen this section, maybe because it provides detailed data, and also it, it shows us in where the different subgroups are performing, how they're performing, and where the issues lie. The second place that I consider extremely important is then to take a look at the different strands and the different standards, and identify specifically where the strengths, if, just take, if, if, if math is an issue, and if the issue has to do with geometry, and if a specific aspect of geometry is a, is a problem, and is it the nature of instruction? Is it when it's taught in the year, is it how much it's taught in the year? I understand why you want to see the percentages, but that's, that's sort of where the road leads, and by looking at these areas, and then looking at the particular standards, that's sort of where the, the work gets done in order to improve student learning, improve the level of performance at least.
Thank you.
And did you feel that the, the schedule helped to this one?
I do, absolutely. We have worked very hard at Beaman to build a new master schedule, which sort of puts everybody on the same time clock, so we're able to really strategize in how we use our personnel to push into classrooms, whether that be Title I, EL, our paraprofessionals, and our special educators, to make sure that each grade level is getting sort of a combination of resources at critical times during the day when they're teaching core content area. And the new schedule has allowed for that, as well as the idea that we've built a lot more continuity in to when students are in their specialist period, and when teachers have preparation, and when they have common planning times. So that's a parallel, it used to be that common planning time put an extra time for students to go to an art music or gym that wasn't typical of their day, now it's built in very seamlessly, so students would be traveling to those specials at any given day for the grade level, and one of those just happens to be when teachers do their common planning, so it's not extra time away from the content.
And of course, we're able to do that with cooperation and the most strategic negotiations, so we thank them as well. Moving on to East Gloucester, a quick look, we can see that they're ranking statewide in the seventy-second percentile in terms of meeting their goals, they met eighty-five percent of the target goals that were established for them by the state. I don't want to get into that, it's just a problem. But if we take a look at the English Language Arts, look at the reasons, all the groups, they have exceeded their targets. If we move into the mathematics, a little bit, a little bit different, but either they met the target, improved below target, or no change. So by degree, if I were to ask Amy, what area do I focus in, she would probably say mathematics, yes? I don't want to break it down.
Yep, I will, and every year at budget time, I say I need more time with my math coach, and this is why. So I'll be saying it again, it's free.
They asked for that, didn't they?
I have a question about that, I remember we did not, we are not able to put coaches and math coaches at the schools, so I would like to see them at every small elementary school, at every school actually, full-time, but what, what is our ratio right now for coaches? How many math coaches do we have in elementary?
There are two math coaches.
Two, one.
One math coach is split between two buildings, and my math coach is split between three.
Okay, and then we have...
It's our math coach.
She's mine.
Do we have one out of mainly?
No.
Yet, we don't have one there yet.
If you look at the ELA, I credit a large portion of exceeding targets in all areas to the collaboration between my classroom teachers, my special education department, and the literacy coach that I do have full-time, and the fact that that oversight is always there, and that coordination, working together for interventions and so forth, that's when you see exceed the target, so I like it for now.
So we've heard about the math twice, we've heard about the English Language Arts, I know this has been a resource issue, and I've heard about it more extensive, covering the waterfront with our instructional coaches as well. If we move on to science, the science aid met target. Turning to growth, we see that there is either exceeded typical growth or high typical growth in ELA, and that mirrors how they did in terms of achievement, and for the most part, we have high typical growth in mathematics as well, so East Gloucester's kind of soaring along. Nothing, you don't have a group of twenty that took the...
Not large enough.
Not large enough. Chronic absenteeism is good, exceeded the target means that they have enabled the number of chronic absentees to go down, the percentages, there is, the students with disabilities is a concern, because their numbers went up, and, but the difference, the change is one point seven percent, so, you know, out of forty-three students, want to talk about a lot. And that said, anything else that you wanted to add for East Gloucester?
Um, absenteeism went down largely because of the work of my school psychologist and adjustment counselor, working with families to get, to make that importance of coming to school, and because of great success, and hoping to keep it up.
Right, well, thank you. From Gloucester, we go off to Lanesville, fire in the trees. Fire, fire.
Fire.
In a word, POMCO was doing exceptionally well, they met eighty percent, seventy-nine percent of their target goals, and they are in the seventy-eighth percentile statewide. Sometimes, as your scores get higher and higher, it's harder to meet the goals that are being set, you know, if you're already pretty much where you need to be. Moving to some of the detailed data, the indicators. Again, we're seeing for the most part that the subgroups have exceeded their targets. In math, again, we've got three exceeded targets, one improved below target. No changes for the economically disadvantaged. Science, there is a bit of a decline for all students. So that's something that I think we're going to be taking a look at. And if you have questions either tonight or another night, we can certainly talk about the new science program, the FOS program that's being adopted by the state, by the state by difference. Turning to student growth percentile, English Language Arts exceeded typical growth or high typical growth, right? Good stuff. Same is true for math. ELL is not, and here we have with chronic absenteeism, we have met, exceeded, two improved below targets, and another met target as well. So it's in the right direction?
It's definitely in the right direction. And you know, I really have to thank my whole staff. Because like you told them earlier, we take a closer look at the NCAS and as we dig deeper and deeper, drill down, we know what we need to do and we try our hardest to do it. So we did make a good, good difference from 2018 and 2019. So we're very happy with that. Anything else that you want to add?
Well, like ELA, again, the coaches made a big difference. You know, we, you know, we got our best practices, you know, from our, we learned from when we were involved with an outside group on what to do, what we needed to do, and they were able to provide us with the programs that we needed for as interventions. I would really like to see that grow in math. We are lacking that a little bit in math, like as far as the personnel. I want to thank, you know, the Gail Avery for our attendance officer because right up until probably two days before school got over, we were having meetings with parents. And she was calling them and that helped us a lot with our absenteeism, you know? Because when you're saying that, it's, they take 10% of kids with 18 days or more. So I mean, 18 days is a lot of time to miss, you know? So you know, if, you know, you could look at it monthly, we might get 95% or 96% attendance. But when you look at certain groups and those, everyone's, it's doubled. You know, all students and then the subgroup. So they're coming more than once in this NCAS. So you know, you know, a lot of parents didn't like hearing my calls or receiving my letters or invites to meetings, but they need to know that it does affect their children. It does include the gaps, learning gaps. And that, like it comes down to, oh, why is my child learning? And they do the testing and special aid can get blocked and stuff. So there is a way that we can kind of, it's actually to parents, every day counts, every day matters.
What's the typical response on a first visit for this topic from a parent?
They're usually embarrassed and we make action plans. And then there's some that we have to go further with. So, but we do have to let them know on this lot of research and data that we showed them, just by missing so much days, this is what they're falling behind with, from their peers, you know?
And before we leave Plumco, I just again want to highlight that in both ELA and math, lowest performing exceeded their targets. That's pretty special. Okay, on to veterans. Veterans took a little bit of a turn, dipped this year. They were in the 24th percentile last year. They're now in the 18th percentile. We turn to the detailed data and we take a look at English Language Arts. We can see that there were some declines across the board, our lowest performing. And this, I think, is a theme through this, if the lowest performing improved below the target. If we look at the math, the lowest performing exceeded their target. While everybody else was in a bit of a decline. The decline ranges from minus 2.1 to minus 1.7 to minus 2.1. So it's not as if they dropped off the table. The numbers are, how statistically significant, it's hard to say, but it's still a decline, not trying to soften it in any way. We also need to know that demographically, 25% of your students are English language learners.
Yeah.
So that's a factor. Science, all students, there was an improved below target. But high need students, which includes students with disabilities, English language learners, economically disadvantaged, et cetera, there was a decline of minus 3.4%. In terms of English Language Arts and student growth, with the exception of students, well, students with disabilities and the white subgroup had low growth. Again, the lowest performing, typical growth was high. And for the other, for the all students, high needs, economically disadvantaged, the growth percentiles are in the 40s. But that is characterized by the state as typical growth low. Numbers are about the same, or the categorizations are about the same for mathematics. Typical growth low for most, but if we take a look at students with disabilities in math, we're at 50.2% in terms of the growth percentile. So that's, that is high. The, one of the big concerns in light of the numbers that I just mentioned, English language learner proficiency, based upon the access testing decline, and it was, this was somewhat precipitous. This is minus 21.5. And perhaps you can speak to that even now or in terms of the numbers or how many students have been coming in?
Yeah, so English language learners, we had 14 newcomers last year, which means right from another country, no English at all. Plays into a lot of different targets. So when you talk about chronic absenteeism, some of the things we've noticed is on early release days, the English language learners don't come in. So we're looking to, you know, because parents got work. So we're looking at some of that stuff as well. This year, we've gotten a paraprofessional from the United Way who's helping out our two ELL teachers. So we're feeling more supported this year in that category. So we continue to work with these great kids, just amazing. But they bring a whole new set of challenges for all of us veterans and we're on a learning curve as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah?
In most areas, with terms of the absenteeism, there is some movement in the right direction.
Bridge?
Oh, sorry, excuse me.
So I think as Tammy alluded to, there, those differentiated lines, a student or a group of students can be counted multiple times across. So, and so, you know, I'm curious, obviously, the English language learner population is having some effect about. I'd be curious, is there any way to parse out, to almost say, okay, if we took the English language learners out of these subgroups, are these subgroups now performing more aligned with how are subgroups at other elementary schools? Or is it, are they still, you know, is that the one thing? Are really the English language learners are just drawing off the scale? Or are our high need students English?
I think that's what we're saying. I'm saying that, I'm saying that it has an impact and it should be recognized. But the same is true for students with disabilities who are economically disadvantaged and vice versa. So there's this, there's this, you know, tapestry across all the different types of subgroups. They could be parsed out. We could take a look at that and see what the, what the difference is.
So I guess my question is, so obviously the base percentage, you know, it's in the 18th percentile versus the 78th percentile, you know, up in North Gloucester, right? Again, that is comprehensive the whole school, right? That's everybody who's in these subgroups and without, outside of subgroups.
In two major columns, all students and the lowest performing students.
Right. And so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is when you're looking at to grab one, economically disadvantaged, right? If they're only being compared against themselves as far as what's the improvement? I'm just curious, I'm curious why economically disadvantaged students going to different elementary schools in our district seem to be having an ability to, you know, hitting these improvement targets, but economically disadvantaged students at veterans, you know, are improving below target, right? I'm trying to figure out what is different at vets? I mean, I know there's a lot of positive differences like as far as resource allocation. What's different at vets that these subgroups are struggling in a way that they're not, these same subgroups are not struggling elsewhere?
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to talk a little bit about teaching with poverty in mind? And then you could speak a little bit to the work that you're doing at your school?
Yeah. I think the question's a complicated one because of the formula, certainly. But keeping in mind that the lowest performing subgroup may have different needs, require much greater resources than the lowest performing subgroup might at another school, certainly plays into it. We have not separated out and disaggregated all of those members. We certainly can. I think it's probably best to, math talks a little bit about that.
I mean, the co-teaching.
Yeah, I mean, so the fifth graders that just left, veterans scored, we had more students in, met or exceeded in both math and ELA than we've had over the last three years. These are students that started in co-teaching when they were in kindergarten and went all the way through. So we are seeing improvements there. We are a trauma-sensitive school, so we really gear ourselves towards helping students that come from low socioeconomic status. So that's, there's numbers going on and our school suspensions are down. Absenteeism has improved. So we're attacking a lot of different areas on many different fronts. I don't know if that kind of helps to answer your question, but. So there's, you know, this, one of the things I wanted to point out as a positive was that we did have typical growth, sometimes low, but sometimes in the 50s, which is something we've never had before. So that's something that we're very excited about, that we're seeing students are growing from year to year, certain students even hitting in the 90s. So growth from year to year has been very, has changed and that's on an upswing, so.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is that if I'm an economically disadvantaged student and according to these numbers, you know, when I read here, I'm an economically disadvantaged student and I go to Plumco over East Gloucester, and chances are I'm going to, you know, be able to start meeting these goals, or my cohorts will start meeting these goals. And I'm an economically disadvantaged student and I go to veterans, even though I seem to have more resources handed to me at veterans to address these issues, for some reason, my cohort of veterans isn't succeeding in the way that my cohort would be succeeding in other schools. And I'm trying to figure, is that because these categories are maybe overly broad? And what, you know, the spectrum of what economic disadvantage really means is huge and the people who, you know, I mean, I'm trying to figure, what is going on here? Why does this cohort struggles here and not, if they're actually all the same, you know, background?
One of the things that you can't tell just from the economically disadvantaged number is what other subgroups those kids might also fall into. So, you know, when you look at high needs, it's a combo. So just economically disadvantaged can also correlate with disabilities. You know, EL, they're writing things, that may have something to do with it, where, you know, when you look at the data through all those lenses, it might be, those kids might have a completely or very different demographic in one school versus another.
And if you see over on the right-hand side, it says, do you...
What does it say?
In. What does it say?
N for number.
No, 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 no. And the green, down on the right-hand side, it says, view details or something like that.
About the data?
About the data. If you click that, it will give you meanings of everything that's listed in that. And you can go down to economic disadvantaged and they will tell you it's a mixture. So, so it's hard to say, yes, the kids that fall as economically disadvantaged from our schools are all the same. Will not look the same, they're not the same kind of group. They're a mixture. So they could come in more than once, twice, three, they could get kind of, what, five times? Once we come in and all of a sudden, certain students.
They all have.
If a student was economically disadvantaged and had a disability and maybe even was an EL student.
Yep.
And probably was the lowest performing.
And with all students.
And then in all students.
Chronic absenteeism.
And chronically absent. That one student is at none a lot of fronts, right? And depending on who's the population is in each of our schools that's falling into that, whether that child or those children are falling into multiple categories or not, you'd have to look individually at each student that's falling into those categories at each of the schools. So it's too broad to say that economically disadvantaged students at one school do better than the other because you got to look at all the other categories and things that come in.
They're making practices, as you're, I think, suggesting at veterans, co-teaching being one example, that are working well with particular groups of students. It's also possible in different schools that a high needs or economically disadvantaged made their expectation for a higher score on these tests is part of the fact that the school itself has had success. So they may be starting in a different place in terms of what they need to accomplish. And because it's, it's a more, a higher performance target, then they make it more difficult for that particular subgroup to get where they need to be as well. So we should look at both of those particular issues. Anything else on veterans, any questions, sir?
No, I think, you know, the grade four numbers, we went down in ELA. One-sixth of the students missed the met by one question. So that's why, we don't know. We're going to try and parse that out, but if we can get that group of kids to just answer that one more question, please. The whole members would have looked differently, you know? So we, you know, we do have small classrooms there, so each kid can count for a lot. But I, I think, you know, also, grade three was the first time they had taken it on computers. And students, a lot of our students don't have access to computers on a regular basis. So we do have typing programs, but I think it was, it was a big shift for us too. We're a little wiser this year now.
Not for lack of it?
No, thank you.
Okay, then, on to West Parish. Good. West Parish is somewhere, where they go. Okay, West Parish is in the 75th accountability percentile statewide. And they have met 76% of their, towards their percentage, towards their goals, which means they either met or exceeded their targets. That was another strong showing. If we take a look at ELA, once again, we see some exceeded targets. All students, the white subgroup population, met targets and improved. And there is one decline, that's with students with disabilities. So that's clearly a target area that needs to be looked at. Mathematics, a little bit of a slip in spite of the fact that West Parish is in the 72nd, is that what it says, 72nd percentile? They're, in terms of comparing their scores this year with last year, there's a bit of a decline overall in terms of mathematic achievement. Science, met the target or exceeded their target. If we, it's interesting because if we turn to the English Language Arts growth, we can see that there's some high typical growth, low typical growth in 40s. Our students in 40s, as we saw just previously, there's low growth below the 40th percentile. And again, the white subgroup population at typical growth high. Mathematics, the growth is high. It's all typical, either low or high, which means that it is either in the 40s or in the 50s. Chronic absenteeism, I think we have a mixed bag here. Some improvements, particularly with the lowest performing students, and some declines and some improved below targets. So, strengths, challenge?
Sure. So last year was our first year with this new assessment. And why this new accountability... and the board has moved accountability and, you know, it's always hard to be the meet 94% of your targets in the first year, it's hard to go up from there, so very pleased with moving up a percentile, but have fewer of our targets met this year. So that's not an excuse, that's just the reality of different kids in front of us each year. The other thing with our students with disabilities, we are, you know, we look really closely at our lowest performers, all of our interventions. We do have two programs in our building that are district-wide programs for special education students and we make a real effort to have every student who can take the MCAS in the form it is and not the MCAS alt. So we did have eight students take the MCAS alt last year, which are automatic, not passings on the state testing. But we also moved students from our severe special needs program into our learning center. And so they, we had students last year who took the MCAS for the first time and they had been on the MCAS alt for the two years prior to that. So it, it is a different group of kids each year and we don't like seeing decline ever, but it, it is, you know, there are some variations there that would allow for that to happen. Our math, our third graders last year, we worked with our math coach, our Title I interventionist, we were first year Title I, it was our first year last year to have a Title I teacher all year who did math interventions. But our third graders came in last year really struggling to grasp the addition and subtraction concepts, which slowed us down in our pacing and introduction of multiplication, which slows down the rest of the year. So our third grade scores aren't where we wanted them to be. And our fourth grade teachers are seeing that and feeling that now and are working really hard to, to fill those holes and help our students, you mean, those mathematics proficiencies that they.
Any questions for West Parish? And we move to middle school next.
Can we just take a minute to acknowledge what I think are very, very terrific results in terms of the growth and the percentiles of so many of our schools. I mean, I just, you know, three years ago, four years ago, we were in such a different place and it's very impressive, there's a lot of great work going. And clearly you leaders have a nice, good handle on, on what's going on and, and your leadership in the educational area is extremely vital and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into O'Malley, we see that this year they are in the 15th percentile statewide. Last year they were in the 18th percentile, so it has moved in the wrong direction in terms of the overall progress toward the improvement targets. It's at the 36th percentile, between 25 and 50% is referred to as moderate progress toward, toward the goals that have been established. If we take a look at English Language Arts, for all students, at 624, there's a decline, but the decline is 0.6%. So it's, the reason for the decline is, I mean, the number is quite low. Lowest performing students have improved below target. Otherwise we see a mix of either no change or declines and another met target as well. Nothing precipitous, we're looking at minus 0.8, minus 0.3, 2.2, minus 2, minus 3.3. Not washing it away, but it's not 10, it's not 15, where we saw in one particular instance with our ELL kids in one of our schools. In mathematics, there's an improved below target for all students. You have a couple of exceeded targets, particularly the lowest performing and our EL and forming ELL students. And a couple of improved below targets and no change, so it's, it's kind of a mix. Science, a disappointing decline across the board. We had some extensive conversations about the direction that the science program should be going in middle school. English Language Arts growth, for the most part, we're seeing typical growth in the 40s designated by the state as being low typical growth. The same is true for the mathematics. And then turning to chronic absenteeism, we see across the board with one exception, we see a decline, meaning that there's increased chronic absenteeism at the middle school. So.
So I wish I could better do this, just to be clear. So just, there are a few ways I look at this. I think that we, I know that we have a lot of things in place this year that will address all of the things that we're seeing here. The first thing I think about primarily is standards alignment. That comes across in the math, you know, not huge improvements, but some growth in the math. One of the things the math department did last year in sixth and seventh grade specifically, they identified priority standards. They realigned assessments to the standards and they adjusted the pacing of the curriculum. This was the third year in the curriculum program, which is usually, that's the turning point here. We really internalized more how to use those, that program effectively. And there have been some updates to the curriculum that, that we purchased that are, are being implemented this year. So that focus, between the focus on standard alignment and really analyzing what is the essential knowledge for kids to know and what to spend more time on as opposed to less time on, I believe was the starting point of why there's growth and that should continue. Eighth grade will do that same priority standard analysis this year. Along with the data teams that, that worked fall, winter, spring last year was the first year that it was implemented across the entire year. And those teams are focused on exactly what we're working on with MCAS, which is who are the lowest performing kids, who are on the cusp to move into a different area and then how do we adjust our practices to, to meet the needs of those. Science is, isn't good, not good, but is, is an accurate example of how standards alignment is, impacts. The eighth graders last year did not have instruction in the new standards and with curriculum materials or revision in the new standards. So they, they tested on standards that weren't part of the curriculum that was designed for them. The science department started sixth and seventh, implemented revised curriculum last year. And this year, this summer, they completed the eighth grade, redesigned curriculum, so this year's eighth graders are experiencing, have experienced closer, not 100%, I think sixth grade was, I think, still coming along the way. But they'll have, you know, two-thirds of their experience at middle school will be with instruction that's aligned to the standards, so I would expect significantly different results this year from this. They are also focused on what impacts our literacy, which is the Common Core literacy standards, the science focus is on academic vocabulary and assessment design this year. So all of those things will contribute to their, their ability to perform well against the standards. We know we have fabulous things going on in our science department. We know kids are engaged in and, you know, really dig into the experiences provided. If we're not aligned to the standards, none of that is gonna show up on the test. So that, that really is what continues to come out. I also credit the EL performance that, that was shown, that the, our lowest performers are based on data teams. The EL performance is, you know, I think, led us to a very skilled teacher that we had, who has no lover with us, unfortunately, she left in August. But she was very focused on bringing the We Can Do standards into the content standards and, and helping to work with teachers and providing resources and understanding on, on how the skills of our, of our English language learners could be enhanced through content curriculum and integrating that. So, so we'll have some work to catch up on with that, where we have a new teacher in place this year and more newcomers. We also will hopefully soon have an intern from the United Way program that Mericorp, that Matt referenced having, and so we'll hope, hopefully that will support the increased numbers that we have. Lastly, also sticking with the standards alignment, I was hoping to mention that West Parish, we do have sub-separate programs in which kids are specifically placed because they are three years below grade level or sometimes more. And with the exception of four students, we had, I think it was 21 last year in the program where they're, they're below grade level significantly, yet we still test them on MCAS. So that has to come into play with regard to, not surprising that our, our special ed program, the students in the program are gonna be, it's gonna impact our, our performance level. The second thing that the focus that I look at is instructional practice. And this is where I think we put into our school improvement plan and have a great number of things going on that, that will impact the practices as well. So I spoke to data teams briefly before. We are continuing those in math and English Language Arts, fall, winter and spring. They actually met this week, Monday math met, today English met, and it's, it's all focused on, you know, the questions, what do we want our kids to know and be able to do? How do we know when they're doing it and what do we do when they don't? So they start by looking at the lowest 20%. They look at MCAS data and see how the, the local testing data or the standardized data from ECCVM and our rating benchmarks, for example, correlates with the MCAS scores, they look for surprises, positive or negative, and they look for who are at-risk kids that we target. I do believe that doing that work over last year and this year, a little bit two years ago, is what impacted our lowest performing students growing. If we're focusing on them continuously and going back and adjusting practice, that growth will continue. We have, we are looking for a different screening tool, progress monitoring tool, our data teamwork and to identify skills that we need to target and content that we need to target and how we progress monitor the kids. The ECCVM that we use across the board, both subjects, people are feeling doesn't give us the information we need. If we really wanna attack the skills, attack the lack in, in alignment with standards and knowing how our kids are doing against the state standards, we have to have tools that will help us specifically identify that along the way. Our involvement in Essex County Learning Community has brought us to several different instructional practice changes that are really just being put into place. So with a multi-tiered system of support, our goal this year is to focus on what all kids receive from high to low and making sure that we're maximizing that. Will we finish that maximization this year? No. But we'll, we'll get a good start on it. So our, our first steps this year have really been to look at our student review team process. We're using a new protocol. When we gather together as houses and talk about kids, we're looking specifically at instruction, the practices, the curriculum and the environment in the classroom. The fourth prompt is looking at the learn and assets and deficits the learners bring in. But I'm asking the teachers to say, okay, let's put the learn aside and look at the things we can control. So all of our focus is about what we can control, what we can impact. So that really has just started, we spent our October 1st PD day focused on that and that work will continue in our teams throughout the year and over the course. We have a team attending Universal Design for Learning workshops and we'll, we're doing a training, training all of that. That's, that's purely about instructional process and making sure that we are engaging kids in practices and giving them an opportunity to access flexibly a different.
The key word there is providing access, whether through technology or any other means.
Right, yeah. Our teachers, beginning in November, with the number of initiatives that we have in the school improvement plan, will be able to choose a focus group, we could call it a PLC, but we'll, we'll spend faculty time for the rest of the year focusing on whether it's project-based learning that we've, we're starting to refresh and expand. There'll be professional development on that in November. Whether it's looking at UDL, whether it's looking at, you know, how we can do better with differentiation, whether it's writing process, et cetera. So teachers will choose based on the needs of their kids or the things that they feel need to grow with, to spend some study group time, focused on that. Again, all streamlined toward the same direction. In the year, we will need at some point, probably towards the end of the year, to focus on what our tier two and tier three are gonna need to look like. One of the things that comes up when, when we look at our innovation plan is that there were intervention classes for math and for literacy in that plan, they don't exist anymore. So how much has that impacted our, our ability to respond to student needs? Probably significantly. We don't have coaches, the question was raised before. We do have program leaders in math, in English Language Arts and in science, they don't have a least time. So any work that they do on data analysis, organizing, designing curriculum development and vision and targeting what kids need is done on top of their full teaching schedule. It's, it's not the most efficient way to try to have anyone facilitate growth. And then, you know, on the, on the social emotional side, we know that has a huge impact. We have a lot of kids who struggle in a variety of ways. We're constantly focused on what our culture and climate feels like. It doesn't always feel the way we want it to feel. We have the wonderful amazing sales principles for us to, to participate with and the kids buy into, but we need more. So this year, the, the team of people got together and built a curriculum that, that goes on once per cycle where the kids are delving in more deeply to resiliency, bullying prevention and a variety of other social, emotional and citizenship kinds of experiences. So they, they work with different groups that they're necessarily in class with. They're facilitated by a pair of teachers or a pair of staff, because it's, you know, our parents, our specialists, our academic teachers are all involved in that. And so we're on, I think, week four.
Just finished.
Just finished four, thanks Adrian. And so, so that's, that's pretty exciting, it's just getting off the ground, but it gives that opportunity for kids to come together in a different way with, with a focus purely on, you know, how do I navigate this whole school thing, middle school thing, the social thing? So that's, I think, gonna be really beneficial for us. Attendance, you know, is obviously an issue, so we've got a couple of pluses going on this year. Tammy mentioned Gail Avery, our attendance officer who started at the end of the year, she was amazing from the day she walked in the door. She's already had a huge impact. She knows her way around how to, to, to deal with and help and support as well as toe align, but we need a kid in. I can say that, that she and Officer Sutera have already made way more than I would like to see, visits to homes to get kids literally out of bed into school. So that, that's really helping us. We also purchased to use this year a functional behavior assessment tool specifically for absenteeism and trunacy, so we're gonna begin to use that. It's basically a, you know, try and dig down into why the kid is not coming to school. We, we had quite a few very chronically absent kids last year. We had a student who missed 143 days of school. You know, we had services involved, we had court involved, we had DCF involved and, you know, it's not for lack of effort. But the ELL is certainly gonna help us with that. So we have some work to do on that. The other, the flip side of that is the curriculum needs to be engaged, so that's a piece of it. So parts we have control over, parts we don't, again, the focus on what we have control over.
Question, John. What happens with that student who missed all those schools? Where is that student? Are they still, are they back in the same grade?
He's not back in the same grade, we divided tutoring over this summer. It's a student who's on special education, the decision was made that the social emotional impact would contribute to his lack of ability to return to school. We're still in process with a variety of departments and social services to keep him in school, learning is to be. It's, it's a challenge, I will say. The, the last piece that's, you know, we talk about things that aren't necessarily in, in our control, but they're an important impact is we will ask, I'm sure, just, so, you know, we, we very often have positions unfilled. And when that happens, we have to reallocate. And what that means is the paraprofessionals who are working with special education students are reallocated to cover the social studies teacher groups out, for example. So it's a reality that we deal with and, but we can't, it's not an excuse, but we can't deny the tradition. So all in all, you know, I, I don't love having to report that we're at 15th percentile, but I think we're headed in the right direction. We've got a lot of things, a lot of work to do, but, but we're headed in the right place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. I can't help just begin with, we are gonna go into budget season really soon.
Yep.
And I hope you come to us with a laundry list of things you need. It seems to me, you know, when our elementary academic status was similar, we brought in BSRI. And it seems to me that we need to be providing you assistance because it's out of nowhere.
I'll take all the assistance I can.
Sometimes an outside look is enough to...
Yeah, and we unfortunately, or fortunately, will have an outside look because we'll have to turn around until you come in. And I, you know, I can't say I look forward to that, but, you know, I'm always interested in information, you know, as to someone else's perspective coming in, doing an unbiased look at what we're doing, what we're making recommendations for, how our perceptions match reality, and how we can help improve over time.
So I have a few questions. The first one is, why are we not having the classes that are part of our innovation plans? There was, was math, maybe it was ELA, the intervention classes? I'm sorry if I pointed that out, but you said that part of the innovation plans, a part of O'Malley Innovation School, was it was gonna have these things? Like, how do we, how do we get away with not having the things we're separate and doing? Why don't we have?
I don't have an answer to that. When I came in, that's the status it was.
Did we ever have them?
Yes, those were personal decisions made by the former principal. And it was based on some of the classes not being properly managed, and what was reported to us is that they were not having a positive effect. Doesn't mean it couldn't work, but under that particular system, it was not working.
And then, my second question, I don't know about my fellow committee members, but certainly as I speak to people out in the community, especially as we talk about the elementary school project, I talk about, you know, the need for students to have, you know, access to resources. And so looking at O'Malley, you go, well, you know, O'Malley's an innovation school, it's got, you know, 3D printing lab, an archeonics lab, the GED is always throwing, you know, STEM-related money at it, and yet it's, you know, science scores are, you know, not great. And then you mentioned, well, you know, a big part of that is not they're not learning science, they just aren't, they weren't learning science that was aligned to the curriculum that is being tested on. And so my other question would be, why was that? And like, was this curriculum brand-new that no one's not coming? Or is this like, we knew it was coming, but weren't able to turn the ship in time to...
Again, unfortunately, I wasn't here to see what the curriculum fully looked like previously, but just coming from my former district, I know that the revisions that needed to be made to switch over to the next gen standards and the new MCAS were significant. You know, many places went from a later-gate curriculum to a spiral curriculum, entirely different way of curriculum instruction, much more inquiry-based as opposed to the former content-based standards and curriculum. So I, you know, I can't speak to why, I mean, STEM is STEM, but, you know, whether it's, we could do it in a whole lot of different ways. And these tests sometimes can be very discreet in terms of the topics that they choose to address and ask the kids to respond to.
So yes, and it's fine if you don't have the answer. I'd be curious to see whether, if this is an issue in eighth grade, kind of across the state of life, if more schools are kind of caught and go, geez, this is a major revision. We tried for two years to get ready for it, but two years wasn't enough to get things in place? Or if this is something in particular to O'Malley, just kind of taking maybe longer than it should to term?
At O'Malley, we probably have the best science program that simply doesn't fit the standards. And I had asked, you know, it's impolite for me to say this, but I had asked two years ago that the current science course with bridges and the cards and everything else being elective, and we funnel as many students through that elective as is possible to have that experience whilst also taking a course which we know is aligned with the standards. That didn't come to pass. We're having conversations, and something has to give. You can do great stuff, and, but if what we're required to demonstrate requires this, and I'm not a breadth-over-deep kind of individual, but the reality is there are six strands, and they have to be covered, and they have to be covered well.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't think anyone would argue that someone, that an eighth year coming out of O'Malley was not educated in science. It doesn't have any scientific knowledge, right? You know, but, for better or worse, this is the scientific knowledge, you know, that we've chosen as a community, state community to, you know...
And I would say that, again, it goes back to alignment theory, so regardless of what we're doing, if we're doing incentives, instead of working under, the frameworks are a huge umbrella, and yes, they put constraints on what we do, but we're a public school in Massachusetts, and there are very creative ways you can work under that umbrella to meet the standards, and that has to be our focus, that we can be all kinds of creative and aligned. It has to be aligned.
And as a district, we're moving kids out, and the standards came. So we're all looking at these new standards and trying to pilot different programs. So as we got the new program, and they'll explain to you, probably at a different school committee meeting, our kids going through that will now be entering into O'Malley aligned to the standards, which will start, hopefully, three to, you know, three years it usually takes in for the students to start going, so.
I think some of it had to do with timing, too. There are some districts who started, I know the district that was previously started a couple of years sooner preemptively to try to get aligned to what they thought was coming. They looked at the projections before it was even adopted to try to move. Some places did that, some places were not able to do that. So I think that's, if you looked across the state, you'll see variation depending upon how they did the adoption.
And as suggested, O'Malley is responsible, is mandated to do a turnaround plan. We're jumping on that, but Greg was in fact speaking to a consultant agency that came in and visited with the high school last year. Their purpose through surveys, observations, conversations, is to try to identify perception versus what they observe. If a school says that they feel that they're doing X at a particular level, then the consultants, based upon their observations, may come back and say, actually, we're seeing this much. Or the reverse could be true, where a school believes that they're doing inquiry-oriented teaching at a particular level, but their observations suggest that. There are about 11 or 12 different categories that they use to identify areas that are the basis for a turnaround. And working with a particular committee, they will then identify or ask the committee to identify three or four priorities and develop the action steps and the action plan. We'll be applying, once again, for a turnaround grant, Fund Code 325, which is a $25,000 grant for implementation of the plan, and we would expect the plan to, I'm sure we'll be obligated to have the plan completed by June for implementation. And we moved to the high school. I'm preschool tonight. I'm preschool. I don't know why I don't. As I mentioned, and we can go through this quickly because we did sort of highlight when we first discussed large, last year, the high school was in the 10th percentile in terms of state accountability. They moved to the 15th percentile. The progress towards the targets is that the, what they refer to as substantial progress toward targets, the between 50% and 75%, and they are at the 50% level. If, again, go through it quickly, you saw this before, in ELA, we see exceeded their targets in most, and bed targets in the other subgroups. In mathematics, the same holds where they have exceeded their targets. And then in science, we have a mixture of either exceeding the target or meeting the target amongst the various subgroups. In terms of growth, it doesn't quite resonate when you see as many exceed the targets. You'd expect to see high typical growth, but what we are seeing is growth in the 40s, with the exception of our students with disabilities who have a low growth, about four points below the normal distribution of 40. And in mathematics, we saw that they were, in many instances, exceeding their targets, yet the growth, easy to low growth, which is below 40 or very low growth in terms of the lowest performing. So there's a disconnect between the growth percentiles and the extent to which the students met the targets, something we need to take a look at. I don't know how much of a stretch the particular targets were, but this is something that we're gonna have to try to reconcile. I mentioned before a decline in the overall four-year cohort graduation rate. If we look at all students, it's 224, it's minus 2.1. Again, we're talking single digits having an impact on the numbers. But the extended rate is up where they've exceeded the target. So more students are going through the fifth year in order to get their graduation, or they are in school, and this is also, I didn't mention this at the outset, but the graduation rates, the extended rates, the dropout rates, those are really based from 2016 to 17 or 2017 to 18. So that's non-contemporary data, it's a little bit older. I should have mentioned that at the outset in the following minutes. Manual dropout rate, again, is from 2017 compared to 2018. Mixed bag, bed, no change, declined in the case of 660 white subgroup exceeded the target, meaning that they significantly lowered the number of dropouts. Here we, again, with the English language learners, we see a somewhat of a precipitous decline in performance, and chronic absenteeism is also a concern, with the exception of our lowest performing students who are coming to school. Sir?
Sure, yes. So, you know, of course, we were happy to see, that we were seeing and meeting our areas, but as you might remember from the last time I was here, it was the last meeting, we really wanted to focus in on those lowest performing students, the high-need students. So our turnaround plan that, you know, that we did last year is really focused on the improvements in those areas, so that student growth percentile that Dr. Sapphire talked about is our real target. So we're talking about 10th grade students here are being tested. So when we were analyzing the key areas for the turnaround plan, one of them was the eighth to ninth grade transition, because they only have that year, two years. They're not assessed as seniors, they're assessed as sophomores. So we felt like we really needed to make some improvements in that eighth to ninth grade transition. So we've included things like an extended homeroom every three days in which we're able to address some of the transition issues that students face, both academically and socially-emotionally. We've instituted a, something called, an online system called Exact Path, that gives us information about gaps in student learning prior to ninth grade, so we can provide them with that additional intervention support as early as possible, which is data that we, we didn't have that kind of fine-tuned data, nor this other aspect of that, which is a prescription that they get for how to alleviate this gap that they've had, how to make up for the gap. And then in both social studies and English, our folks are engaged with a group called Keys to Literacy. So it was, I think Cathy alluded to earlier, the BSRI work and what might the equivalent be, I think was sort of the gist of the question. So we're working with a group called Keys to Literacy on, you know, kind of a high school-level approach. And it's shared, not just English teachers, but it's also shared with the social studies teachers, and both are doing this kind of literacy work, both in reading and writing. And so those are some of the things that we're doing to try to really address the issues with our lowest performing students and students with disabilities in particular. The other aspect to it, the second focus of the turnaround plan, is on engaging students in higher-order thinking. The MCAS does, you know, ask students to do a lot to apply their learning. They're doing analysis, they're doing synthesis, they're doing evaluation. So not, to get students to be better at that, it's not just about assigning students higher-order thinking tasks, it's really about how do we do higher-order thinking? So with Greg's help, we've been designing our professional development around active processing, so that when students are learning the content, that they have opportunities to develop cognitive routines. So when we learn something, it's some bit of information. The questions that you all ask show that you're saying, okay, is this similar to or different from what I heard before? You're doing things like measuring this data, the parts to the whole, right? You're doing things like, what are the relationships among the data? And what is the point of view from which the data, right? Those are four cognitive routines that students need to learn and internalize to do well on something like the MCAS. And you can teach that to kids by making it explicit. So in addition to the ninth grade transition, all of our students are really focused on engaging students in higher-order thinking. And the third area of the challenge is really about the attendance, right? You can't teach them if they're not there. So Gail Avery has been, got the most shout-outs tonight, I think, and so I will add to that as the attendance officer, and we're piggybacking with O'Malley on the kind of the protocol for sort of looking at what might the underlying causes be to the chronic absenteeism, and so we're putting with Gail a protocol in place for interventions, including a student-parent contract for, you know, getting the kids to school and engaging them in that. In addition to, you know, the kind of court-involved approaches we've had, DCF-involved approaches, this FPT intervention protocol is really exciting to get kids in the building. We've been able to reduce the number of suspensions from 20 in September last year to five this year. And that's not, and that, the number of days is even more skewed than that, I just didn't count up all the number, but of days missed, it was even decreased even more because of the PACE program that we were able to fund through a grant. So that's making a big difference. The PACE doesn't just keep kids in school, you know, and help us with attendance, but it means that students are also getting some attention about what are the underlying issues that lead to the suspension in the first place. And also, students who are suspended out of school, PACE gives them a place to transition back into school, instead of just throwing them back into classes. You have to be out, you know, for certain things, you know, a fight or that sort of thing, you're gonna be out, but how do you transition back into school? So that's helping a lot as well. So those are some of the things, you know, you heard about the turnaround plan in a greater extent a couple of weeks ago, but those are a couple of the highlights that I could hit.
We've got a question.
Oh, sure, yeah.
How are we doing addressing teacher absenteeism as well?
So that's something that we, we'll have our first data a little bit later in the year, that's not data we're doing monthly yet. So our first bit of data looking last year was that when you take out the folks who were out for a long time, and we had somebody qualified to replace them, the data looked a lot different than it did at first. So we're still in kind of preliminary phases. That was part of, as you know, we put in the plan, we talked about it last time, but we haven't looked at this year's data yet to see how we're doing. Some of the data we do monthly, and some we're doing quarterly, and some we're doing by semester. So the monthly attendance data actually looked really good. We just did that Monday this week, and there was significant improvements, but the teacher data we don't have yet.
Okay, thank you.
We will be back with that.
Okay.
Anything else? Couple or three things just to close it up first. Thank you for listening, and somewhat laborious work to listen to the presentation, but you're welcome to attend any more if you should. It's like... You sure? Thank you. You want more of the same? The titillating. A second, the same thing I said at the very outset, we've got a 60% proficiency towards our target goals as a district. We have some highs, we have some challenges. We've got an elementary school that is starting to surge. We've got three that are skyrocketing. We have a school that took a little bit of a dip, but is working hard to get the ship on the right direction. And we've got a high school that is now being able to implement its turnaround plan and a middle school. a middle school that recognizes the needs, has identified those needs, and will be working in conjunction with consultants to see what we can do to move that thing going. When we speak about all the things that you're going to do, you're hearing things that are programmatic, but I just want to say that there's more than that. It's a two-tiered approach, these kinds of things. On one level, you've got higher order thinking, you've got the interventions, you've got the programmatic stuff, but below that is the issue of culture. Every teacher wants to excel, every teacher wants their kids to excel, but it's looking at our fundamental assumptions, how we coordinate that together, how we work systematically, what our fundamental values are, what we expect in a way of how certain students learn, and how we should even treat our students. All of these things, some are hidden, some are invisible, but unless, unless we explore the collective psyche of any particular school or any organization, the programmatic stuff is there, but it has a greater likelihood to look at something that is imposed than when there's enough conversation, discussion to say, what are our true values, and how are we not only going to change things, but how are we going to reinvent? And we've had some conversations, and I'm doing some reading about that as well, recognizing that program to break, but the culture's going to be there to make it work. It's my sermon on the mount.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now that we've cleared out the room, we want to really imagine what we're discussing.
What about the study?
Already, update on the Student Opportunity Act. Oh, over there. Catch Ben.
Study for education.
Study for education, that's it.
Oh. We had an update on that.
Yeah, we, the, there is an update on that. And it is that next Tuesday, we're actually going there at first meeting with the consultants who are going to be doing the study. Okay, so at some point, and I think it'll probably be after the first of the year, because there isn't, you were just meeting with the consultants and telling them what, you know, making it clear that what it is that we want to do, we've already outlined that in the RFPs. At some point next year, I think we might need to appoint some people to be actually long-term on this negotiations with Rockport. Right now, Kathy and I have been handling it, but it's just, that was their, what they wanted to do, to have the chair and the vice chair, but I think at some, some point in the beginning of the year, when we have a new school committee, we should put some permanent people in that, that, because it'll be the pain point. Other than that, not much more, so there'll be more to report out after we have a meeting. So than before we have a meeting. Okay, now you can go.
Do you have a question? No, I took that up. Update, we spoke last night about the Student Opportunity Act, which is where the state legislature is looking to adopt many of the assertions of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, $1.5 billion over seven years, in chapter 70 funding. As a follow-up, the Senate unanimously approved that last week, and the bill now is going to the House. Some of us had met with Representative Ferrante last week, just to fill a similar floor, very few amendments, that it was very long and arduous crafting of a bill to put together in the first place. So the both houses are very reluctant to accept amendments, they want to move this thing through and see what they can do to process it. They rejected, for example, amendment that would establish a charter school policy review commission. This is predicated on, Sammy Gloucester is well aware of, the impact that a charter school can have on the finances of the public school in that particular area. I think it would have been nice if that had happened, but they, they are going to set up some sort of a study group, or I guess that's where things go to die, but we'll see. There's been a lot of debate regarding estimates as to how much money is going to be available. The governor came out with some specifics. RFY 20, chapter 70 funding was $6.9 million, and the governor's estimate is $7.795 million for FY '21. However, based upon all those things, the Senate, Senator President Karen Spilka and Roger Hatch from the Department of Ed have all said that, that the governor's estimates have not taken into account all of the spending and the allocations, and they don't feel that those numbers are accurate. So I'll, I'll keep watching and waiting, and we'll see what comes down the pike. Central registration update, we had gone to a central registration for students this past summer, and in terms of customer service, in terms of facilitating, it, I think, is something that we're going to continue to do. The principals in particular are most appreciative. We had a couple of staff members here in central office who put out their shingle on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I believe. We're going to be meeting on Friday, a couple of wrinkles. They have really gotten pushed towards, as we got closer to the beginning of the year, the volume really became very high. As I mentioned earlier, since the start of school, since school started this year, we've added 19 additional students, and since the end of school last year, 93 registered, and 22 of them, 24% are English language learners. So there's a lot of traffic, a lot of work, we want to make sure that our materials, and the stuff that we need to, for a quick response for and with families, continues relatively successfully, so we'll be staying with the central administration, yes? Martha Jo, Director of Food Service, is conducting a GPS school lunch survey. You've got the information as to what she's asking. How many times a week do you purchase? Do you feel there are enough options? Are they reasonably priced? What your favorite entrees are, and a whole host of things. So I'm sure that we'll want to invite Martha Jo to BNF in order to present the results of the survey once again.
Is this the Ford School or the high school?
Well...
Because I thought she mentioned it was the high school.
It might only be the high school.
The kind of questions, seeing geared more towards the high school.
Yes. Tier, number four of five, tiered focus monitoring is the new term for the coordinated program review. If you recall, those used to be six-year cycles with a third-year mid-year report. Now it's, it's a two-year cycle. So we just completed our coordinated program review only last year to enter a self-evaluation for this TFM, this tiered focus monitoring. And I noticed in my email that the report from the Department of Ed on our submission just became available today, I didn't get a chance to open it and take a look at it. In particular, it's for civil rights and for special education, so we don't have Title I, we don't have CBT, so it's streamlined just a little bit. And we'll be meeting with representatives on October 4th to discuss the next stage. Last?
24th.
24th, what did I say? Oh, use the two? You see the dentist? Sorry.
How much staff time do these things take up?
Great one. I'll start with a lot, and let everybody feel around, I'm just saying, oh, it may take hours, hours, weeks. And when they do a full-fledged, when a committee would come in, then we set up times where they'll spend an hour and a half with a focus group, but in terms of spent director assistants, who do you plan, myself, the principal, and CBT, and Title I, it could be very tight. The YMCA has had a successful summer literacy program over the last few years where the kids go and they, they do reading and literacy in the morning, and then they take them out either to the YMCA or at the Camp Spindrift. It's usually grade two going into grade three, they're going to continue that, I believe the funding is through the United Way. And they, about 60 students, they're now asking whether or not they can increase it to 90 students. This is no cost to the district, by the way. I asked the principals last Thursday, and they would have no problem referring upwards of 90 students to the program, so we'll follow through on that.
Any questions at the superintendent?
I move that we accept the superintendent's report. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes four to zero, down to the minimum here. We have a grant from the GEF, and it is, or through the GEF, it's actually from Sudbay's. And what they are doing is they're providing a brand-new vehicle, SUV sort of thing, for the food service to move food around. This is at no cost to us, and maybe there's some new...
Three, it's a three-year lease.
Three-year lease.
And I imagine they'll turn it around and sell it, hopefully three years from now.
This is 2019 or 2020 year old.
It's brand-new, I don't know exactly which year, but it's brand-new.
And is this this year's lease only, the $1,000?
It's a three-year.
No, that's over, that's a combination of the three years.
That's all three years?
Yeah.
Nice.
Good.
Yeah.
Sure, Sudbay's did a lot, bought that price too. We should probably send them a letter of thank you.
Yes, and I, I would, I would, they haven't asked for this, but I would assume that they would want to put some little, like they do with the...
Courtesy of?
The...
Yeah, a little branding.
Yeah, a little branding.
Will that require going through the advertising? School property now?
Yeah.
Lease.
It can, yeah.
The advertising wasn't part of...
There's no mention of it here.
I wouldn't, I offer it to them, but we offer it to them, I feel through the...
Yeah, right.
On being out next week?
Yeah, we can throw it, should they ask.
Go ahead.
All right, so, but we do have to accept this, and like I said, there's no mention of advertising at this point, but, okay, do we have a motion?
That we accept the grant for the vehicle, the food service.
Second?
Okay, any discussion?
You can rephrase that a little bit more detail.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. It's unanimous, okay. I guess we've said enough about the Massachusetts School building theory, preschool location is, nothing has changed that we know of. I did want to talk about, we're running into, and we run into this every year, November is December, conflicts with vacation and stuff. So I was looking at the calendar the other day, and what I thought we would do, if it's all right with the committee, is we would just have one meeting in November, which would be the second week, the second Wednesday. That will also be soy metal night, so it'll be at the high school, and it'll start early. But the next week would, the next Wednesday would be right before Thanksgiving, so we're just going to, and then for Chris, then for December, we would move it up to the first and third Wednesdays, so we'd get two meetings in December.
Superintendent evaluation.
Superintendent evaluation.
So what was the date, in November, and one in November?
No, one in November, be the second Wednesday.
The 13th.
Is that what it is?
Sure.
And then the, the first and third Wednesdays in December.
Me too.
So does anybody have a serious conflict with that?
No, I'm fine. I was wondering how I was going to be able to, my family are on Thanksgiving, I'm remaining the night before, I was like, how am I going to do that?
So it's not guaranteed, I'll throw it out there, sorry that I'm not able to happen, so I have, if I'm at Conservation Commission, either those Wednesdays, I'll miss the meetings, but if I don't have anything on this agenda, then it'll be just fine, it's kind of like, you know.
That may just...
Right, we'll see who watches the door, you can be done, hopefully, no one that we're else at.
If something needed to be, you could come late, postpone it.
All right, like I said, that's tentative, I...
I'll take the excuse to ask in the beginning of the agenda for the video, I got to get to school community, I'm sorry, guys.
I know, exactly.
Okay, is there anything else that anybody would like to...
Yes, I'd like to make a referral, and I'm not sure, it's probably programs first and then BNF, but we've had feedback on our website, and I thought it was time to talk about what possibilities there are. I realize we do not have the resources in the district, which is why I say it's a BNF issue, probably more than anything, but maybe deciding what it is we need to do should happen at programs, and then go to BNF, what does anybody, what's everybody's...
Yeah, that may be the route.
That sounds fine.
But, yeah, you decide what it is, and that'd be enough.
Programs could look into whether or not there's curriculum that's at the high school and that's to turn this thing over. Is there coding class, no, there's coding clubs and stuff like that, but there was, you know, there's CAD at the high school, there's coding at the high school, you could pick up, you know.
Or use that, you're having high school kids as interns, that's where James is.
So anyways, that's, without objection, we'll refer that issue to the program and then assume it'll come to BNF. Okay, that's it, kids.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very much, David, good evening.